Okay, welcome, everyone, councilmembers. Vice Mayor, I call this regular meeting of the Albany City Council from May 1st to order, and we will start with the land acknowledgement, which will be read this evening by Councilmember Lopez.
The City of Albany recognizes that we occupy the land originally protected by the Confederated Village of Lijon. We acknowledge the genocide that took place on these lands and must take strides to repay the moral debt that it's owed to this indigenous people, specifically the Alonee Tribe. We thank them for their contributions, which have transformed our community and will continue to bring forth growth and unity. The City of Albany commits to sustaining an ongoing relationship with the tribe and together build a better future for all that now make this their home.
Thank you. City Clerk, can we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Here.
Councilmember Jordan?
Here.
Councilmember Lopez?
Here.
Vice Mayor McKee?
Here.
Mayor Tiedemann?
Here. That brings us to ceremonial matters, where we have a few proclamations to read. The first is our proclamation in recognition of Affordable Housing Month, which I'm very happy to read, and accepting that, we will have Peggy McQuade, a former council member and a current board member with the East Bay Housing Organizations. So, whereas quality, affordable homes are vital to healthy, safe, and racially just communities, and whereas even before current high inflation rates, increasing housing costs led longtime residents to be displaced, live in overcrowded homes, or experience homelessness threatening our region's racial diversity and economic opportunity, and whereas the state of California's COVID-19 emergency declaration has been terminated and the short-term protections afforded to renters, including eviction moratoria during the pandemic, are coming to an end, requiring long-term, sustainable solutions to promote housing, security, and mitigate mass displacement, and whereas stable, affordable homes are the solution to homelessness and support seniors, families, youth, veterans, people with disabilities or special needs, and our whole community, whereas jurisdictions such as Albany are on their six-cycle housing element, their plan to meet the housing needs of their community, and are now accountable to implement programs and policies that promote affordable development and affirmatively further fair housing for low-income communities and communities of color, and whereas local housing organizations are continuing to recognize May as Bay Area Affordable Housing Month because regional action to a growing regional housing crisis is an essential part of recovery from the pandemic and the work to ensure that everyone has an affordable and stable home, and whereas the East Bay Housing Organizations has organized Affordable Housing Week for 27 years, acknowledging the need for and benefits of affordable homes. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Albany City Council hereby recognizes May 2023 as Affordable Housing Month in the City of Albany, be it further proclaimed that the city will continue to work collaboratively to secure sustainable funding and support for affordable housing at the local, regional, and state level, and will encourage residents of Albany to participate in Affordable Housing Week activities.
Good evening, Mayor, council staff, community. I'm here tonight as a member of East Bay Housing Organization's Board of Directors. Since 1984, EBO has mobilized the power and wisdom of our members to produce, preserve, and protect affordable housing opportunities for low-income communities throughout the East Bay. Thank you for recognizing Affordable Housing Month and affirming your commitment to affordable housing. Throughout May, EBO members and staff are organizing 15 public events to educate our community on issues of housing justice while calling attention to the housing affordability crisis, promoting solutions, and celebrating our achievements. Our programming this year includes a great lineup of events, community celebration, days of action, panel discussions, workshops, and more, and you can view all of our events on our website at ebo.org/events. And I'd like to invite everyone to participate in these events, especially the groundbreaking at Albany's very own Affordable Housing Project. This will be held at Peggy Thompson Pierce Street Park on Thursday, May 11th, at 10:30 a.m. For many years, I've attended Affordable Housing Month events and dreamed of and supported the idea that one day Albany would host such an event, and this year, the work of so many has come to fruition, and I hope you can all be there to celebrate this wonderful and exciting project. While many of us have adjusted to a new normal and changes in workplace and social interactions, many of our neighbors are struggling to navigate housing insecurity, rising costs, and tenants' rights. We all know that when we uplift and center those most affected by the housing crisis, it strengthens our entire community. On behalf of East Bay Housing Organization's members, I thank you very much for this proclamation, and we hope to see you at several of the events during this coming month. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on this item?
No.
Is there any council comment on this item? I will say briefly that, as some of you might know, my day job is working at EBO, and I think this is the first time in the Affordable Housing Month history that we've probably had a staff member at EBO be able to present the proclamation to a board member of EBO who is a current or a former council member of that same council, so it's very exciting, and I think we're on a good track in Albany. So I encourage everyone to come to all the events, albeit a ton of them, because I have to be, especially the kickoff on the 4th, you can still get tickets for it, and the groundbreaking on the 11th. So, thank you all. That brings us to our proclamation honoring Asian American, Native Hawaiian, Pacific Islander Heritage Month, which the Vice Mayor is going to present. And we are going to have Lucy Chen, Shering Wang Mo, De So Min from the API Parent Engagement Group to accept this.
You're welcome to step up.
City of Albany proclamation in recognition of Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, May 2023. Whereas Asian Americans, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month is observed during the month of May to recognize and celebrate the innumerable contributions, diversity of cultures, languages, religions, and rich heritage of Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders, and whereas an estimated 24 million people identify as Asian and 1.6 million identify as Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander in the United States, and whereas AA and NHPI communities include people with ancestry from the continent of Asia and the Pacific Islands, more than 50 ethnicities with over 100 languages and dialects, and is one of the fastest-growing racial and ethnic minority groups in the United States, and whereas we celebrate the strength, contributions, and legacies of Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders who have helped build this country in each successive generation, and whereas the first Pacific Islanders to arrive in the U.S. were Filipinos who landed in Morro Bay, California in 1587, and whereas the first Japanese immigrants arrived in the United States on May 7th, 1843, and whereas the first Chinatown was established in 1848 in San Francisco, California, and whereas 20,000 Chinese immigrants worked on the transcontinental railroad between 1863 and 1869, and Fujis worked in the Western Pacific Railways in Northern California between 1903 and 1908, and whereas the first Gudwara Sikh place of worship in the United States was built in Stockton, California in 1912, and whereas the origin of Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month dates back to the 95th Congress, 1977 to 1978, when five joint resolutions were introduced proposing that a week in May be designated to commemorate the accomplishments of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders, and whereas in 1992, May was officially designated as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and in 2021, a presidential proclamation expanded this to include Native Hawaiians. And whereas we celebrate AA and NHPI communities, we must also redouble our commitment to combating anti-Asian hate crimes, as the United States has a long history of anti-Asian racism, including the 1882 Chinese Exclusion Act, Executive Order 9066 of 1042, authorizing the internment of U.S. citizens of Japanese descent, and the 2017 Muslim travel ban, and the increased violence towards AA and NHPI communities during the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas the City of Albany is proud to be home of many Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders who have contributed greatly to the prosperity and enrichment of our city, and whereas the City of Albany would like to acknowledge and recognize all Albany Asian Pacific Islander parent engagement groups for their ongoing work to support and promote, promote and celebrate interests of Asian American, sorry, Asian Pacific Islander students and families in Albany. Now therefore be it proclaimed, the City, the Albany City Council does hereby recognize May 2023 as the Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and calls upon our community members to honor Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, Pacific Islanders, while learning more about their history.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, Mr. Mayor, and a staff member and a community. It's really my pleasure to be here, and along with my fellow Asian community members here. First of all, thank you so much for giving us this opportunity, and second, I'm really happy to see the recognition of the contribution of the Asian Pacific Islanders community. And also, I really like the call-out of anti-Asian hates, and it's really huge in the recent years. So I don't want to really get into details, but really, the trend is we are being recognized and to be part of the community, and love your neighbors, love our culture. And the last point I want to make is, we're going to continue to really love this land, this land of opportunities, the land of unity, and also, we're raising children in this land, especially Master Min and along with his daughter, Barry Min, who grew up in this exact neighborhood. And so that's why, as you can see, the API Parent Engagement, how much contribution that we're making, this is our future of our country. Thank you so much for giving us this opportunity. Add on anything? Okay, so Shering is representing Tibetan ethnicity, and also, Master Min and his daughter representing Korean community, and myself is Chinese, so it's really diverse, and thank you so much, everyone.
Is there any public comment on this item? Anyone on the council?
I'll just offer, I heard 1587, if I heard correctly, which is some California history I wasn't aware of, so I will, I learned, and I will go learn more. Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to our third proclamation, in honor of Older Americans Month, and Councilmember Hanson Romero is going to read this one, and we will have Lorraine Davis, the president of the FOAS, to accept.
And if there are other members from FOAS, please feel free to join at the podium.
In recognition of Older Americans Month, whereas the City of Albany includes a growing number of older Americans who contribute their strength, wisdom, and experience to our community, and whereas communities benefit when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds have the opportunity to participate and live independently, and whereas the City of Albany recognizes our need to create a community that offers the services and the support older, and the support older adults may need to make choices about how they age, and whereas the City of Albany can work to build an even better community for our older residents by not limiting our thinking about aging, and exploring and combating stereotypes, and emphasizing the many positive aspects of aging, and inspiring older adults to push past traditional boundaries, and embracing our community's diversity, and whereas the Albany Senior Center provides a comprehensive array of recreational programs and services that meet the needs of older adults in the community, enhancing their quality of life, and helping them to remain active, healthy, and independent, and whereas the City of Albany would like to acknowledge and recognize the Friends of Albany seniors for their ongoing work to support, promote, and celebrate the interests of older adults in our community. Now therefore, the City of Albany do hereby proclaim May 2023 to be Older Americans Month. We urge every resident to celebrate our older residents, help to create an inclusive society, and accept the challenge of flexible thinking around aging.
My name is Lorraine Davis. I'm the president of Friends of Albany Seniors, which is FOAS. Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for this proclamation. We don't have many of our board and directors here, but I was going to introduce the ones that are here. Jackie. Jackie. I had my senior moment. Jackie Armstrong is one of our directors. We have four, but she's the only one that's here tonight. And we have our secretary, Bridgetta, and we have our first vice president, Tricia, here with me this evening. So again, thank you for this honor for the Friends of Albany seniors. We take pride in serving the Albany seniors by volunteering, giving back, and making sure seniors are being taken care of with recreation programs, nutrition programs, and services. The FOAS meets monthly on the first Monday, which is today, we did meet today, and we discussed coming here today, and we also discussed our other ways of, you know, helping other seniors to have things to do other than just being at home all the time. So we encourage anybody interested to get involved with the, because you might not be a senior, but if you live long enough, you will. Thank you very much.
Do we have any public comment? Any comment from the council?
Yes, actually, I have a comment. It's the oldest one on the council, 59 and a half, so I resemble that remark, I'm almost there. Thank you very much for the work you all do, and I note that Albany's seat on the County Paratransit Advisory and Planning Committee has been vacant for a long time. This is the committee that oversees things like the shuttle that serves the Senior Center, so if you know any seniors who might be interested in serving on that body, I encourage you to contact the council staff, city manager, whoever, whoever you can think to contact. My name is Preston Jordan, you can contact me if you want, but whoever, because we'd really like to get that seat filled. Great. Thanks so much, much appreciated, and thank you for your service.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to our final proclamation of the evening, in recognition of Public Service Recognition Week. This proclamation is quite a few pages longer than our other ones, so we are not going to read it in full, though I think that should just be evidence of how very much there is to recognize of what is done in the city by everybody who works here. To call out some highlights, there is, again, there's so much in here, but the Community Development Department has processed 752 building permits, the City Clerk has processed 350 city council agenda items, thank you, the Police Department handled over 30,000 incidences in 2022, our fire response time is beating the standard for the nation, we've processed over 1,000 picnic reservations, almost 7,000 tennis court reservations, again, the list goes on and on, and I am happy we have this to recognize all the work that is being done by our staff that we can see, and all the work that is not as recognized and we don't have as many agenda items about. So I'm happy that even that gets called out and recognized here, and I'll turn it over to the City Manager to say a little bit more.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we have a few staff people here this evening that it's actually incredibly timely that they are in the room for a different agenda item, but I wanted to make sure to recognize the event we had this past weekend, Saturday, our community expo, which was a fantastic event, and while it was just a few hours in length, the advanced planning that went into that event, and during the event, and afterwards, including a 5:00 a.m. start time for those organizing the event, really speaks volumes to the dedication of your team, and I specifically want to recognize both Sid and Danielle, who are with us in the room this evening, for their amazing, above and beyond service to provide this community event for, as you can see on the screen, every member of our community had an opportunity to engage directly in learning about city services, but also, community services at large. The event has grown from about 30 tables in years prior to over 50 different organizations, and also, the enrichment activity of the discussion sessions that were held downstairs in the community center as well, so really just fine-tuning over the years and making the event better and better, again, a direct example, in my opinion, of how much our staff caters with intention and dedication to the community. As part of this, because the proclamation is a bit wordy, we thought we could show a brief clip, this is something we do over social media primarily about Public Service Week, it's a bit of a team-building opportunity for our staff as well, to reflect on why they chose to serve local government, which our City Clerk will quickly adapt to, and here it is.
Thank you. Are there any public comment on this item? Anyone from council?
I just wanted to say, I had the pleasure of attending, I was, I think, a few of us were there, and I was there for the duration of the day. I was also there last year, and it was great to see the growth, and the energy was just fantastic, and you guys just did an amazing job, and I'm very proud and very thankful for all of you, so.
It's a pleasure working with the staff, and I'm reminded of the facilitator who facilitated our team sessions and the council strategic planning sessions, and I was skeptical when he said we had a council that worked well together, but he said, no, it's really true, and so I do really mean it, I really enjoy working with staff, and I thank you for your work and your passion for the work. I love the shout-out for sewers, of course. Being an infrastructure guy, you know, nothing more critical civilization than a sewer, so. What about, what share of the staff were actually pictured through that, would you guess? Is it maybe two-fifths, one-fifth? Just a guess.
What do you guys think?
I'd say maybe 25%.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, definitely each department, yeah.
Yeah, well, it was moving fantastic. Yeah, thank you very much.
Yeah, just, maybe I'm just being lazy here and carbon copying what was said before me, but, you know, I can't express enough my gratitude for the city staff and folks that were there for this weekend's expo, you know, being able just to show up and be present, and be able to engage the community members, and know what's going on in our community. I will say, though, I'm sorry, city staff, but you kind of set the bar a little high for my expectations now, because I wasn't involved in years prior, so this is my first taste of what the expo is supposed to look like. I'm sorry, but I'm looking for something, I'm looking forward to something better next year.
Yeah, I was able to attend, and I really enjoyed the entire event. I think as I walked around to different tables, I was thrilled to see how many community members really enjoying themselves, how many people behind the tables that were talking about the service they provided, I was so excited, but in particular, staff, I mean, I don't think I ran into a single staff member that wasn't just beaming with joy and happiness about being able to communicate with the community and really happy to be there, and that was, I think, a really great event, both for the community to be there, but also, I think, really a great, almost like a staff celebration, so it was quite an event. And then, the one thing I'll add there is, I know we're particularly talking about the community expo, but while at that event, I was invited to the soft launch of the compost that's being given away at the Gil Track, and Councilmember Lopez was there as well, and that was just another great example of being able to see the passion that our staff brings to the work that they do, that goes above and beyond just the kind of nine to five, even though I know for most of our staff, their day starts way before nine and ends way after five, but that was a really, really great thing to see. I had not actually ever toured the Gil I had not actually ever toured the Gil tract before, and so that was really wonderful to tour the farm and to hear about the story about what they're trying to do there.
I'll just echo my other council members. I really enjoyed the expos, and Danielle, thank you so much for your work and everybody else's. And just reiterate that I know that oftentimes if you're in local government staff, it's probably more likely that you're being complained about or to than being praised, so I'm glad we have something to really hammer home that everyone is doing a fantastic job, and we really appreciate it. With that, that's the end of our proclamations, and that brings us to the City Manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to reflect on our most recent E-News for a few key items. We've certainly addressed the Community Expo and recognized it for its success and the challenge for next year, so I appreciate that. Again, just a fantastic turnout and great event that we look forward to building on. And I want to underscore to this event and events in general, we're really trying to find that nexus between the city and the links between the city and community engagement. So this is a great example of trying to use our resources as thoughtfully as possible, to which I am grateful to our Recreation and Community Services Department for doing so well. Also, as noted on our E-News, which I will repeat each time I talk to it, you can sign up for this E-News directly on our website, so it literally lands in your email inbox to stay up to date on everything that is happening in the city as well as links for more information. As noted, we have a compost giveaway follow-up forthcoming. No problem, it's me going back and forth, which is always a very popular event, which will be coming up on, there we go, May 6th at Memorial Park from 8:00 to 11:00. Advice to get there early because it usually is fully, we run out. We don't sell out, we run out because it's free. So please take an opportunity to do that, but the great thing is if we do run out, we do have the compost site at the Gil tract, to which I am very appreciative of that partnership, and that will be ongoing as well. As Affordable Housing Month is literally here, May 1st today, we have an exciting Albany event in partnership on this important month for the groundbreaking for Albany family housing. This is May 11th, just around the corner, 10:30 to 12:30. Please join us to recognize all of the years of work that went into facilitating this opportunity to increase the Albany population locally and facilitate affordable housing in our city, which was a major feat that this council and formal councils should be very proud that they saw this effort through. So this will be an opportunity to celebrate that. The Citywide Garage Sale is right around the corner as well. This is grown out of the opportunity and interest to reduce waste and to reduce, reuse, recycle, primarily reuse with regard to this event and its garage sales throughout our community. So please take the opportunity to do some shopping and network with your community, Saturday, May 13th, 9:00 to 3:00. Update on the city's housing element. Our Community Development Director, Jeff Bond, has received response from the state that we have a bit more work to do with regard to comments received. At this point in time, we're envisioning these to be more at the administrative level, not necessarily of major policy substantive change. We are still in communications with the state to understand exactly the details of those changes, and we'll be certain to include any updates on our website as well as through my communications and our Community Development Director's communications to both the council, the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the community at large. So more information on this is absolutely forthcoming and in short order as we envision adoption very soon. We are still under construction in a number of ways throughout the city. Marin Avenue is ongoing, but nearing completion, at least with regard to the city project. And I want to be clear that there are more than one projects ongoing on Marin Avenue. We envision that we will need a full street closure for a section of Marin Avenue, which will occur Saturday, May 20th through Sunday, May 21st. We will ensure a significant amount of outreach through a number of different channels, in person, by postcard, also through electronic notification, and through every other channel that we can facilitate to make sure folks are aware of this closure and the detours that will be available to them. The area that will be under construction is Evelyn through the Aloney Greenway. Again, this is to do the deeper rehabilitation to that roadway to improve the passability. And this facilitates us doing it in a more comprehensive, quick turnaround to hopefully ensure the safe transport of our children during the school week that Monday because it includes the Greenway pass-through that all the students seem to take quickly. As I mentioned, there is more than one project on Marin. We have received concerns, which I share, with regard to the work being conducted by East Bay Mud. It is fantastic to receive the improvement of the water lines. However, it is challenging to have ineffective patchwork on some of Marin Avenue. I want to assure the council and the community that our staff are absolutely aiming and continuing to work with East Bay Mud to improve the passability of those sections that have been under construction. This is an ongoing effort, and I hope to provide additional updates as we are able to confirm an improvement to the infrastructure that's currently in place. The street lighting evaluation is underway and going very well. Our technicians through the contract are conducting analysis and inventory, including the work today, actually. So we look forward to the synthesis of this analysis and guidance on next steps. Very excited to have that underway. And that concludes my report for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Quite a bit in the report this time. Thank you for managing it all.
Thanks.
Are there any questions from council? If not, we'll go to public comment. If anyone intending would like to ask a question about or comment on the City Manager's report, please raise your hand or come to the front now. You'll have one minute. If you're on the phone, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine. This is for questions and comments on the City Manager's report only. If you have comments on matters not on the agenda at this time, that is for the next section.
Good evening, this is Jeremiah. I'm just going to kindly remind City Manager, if we could include in the report the food program at the community center and possibly the senior center. I think it's the first Friday of every month. I'm not sure if it's, they're both on this first Friday at the same time, but I know in the manager's report a while back, there was monthly data and information on the food programs available at the community center and the senior center. That's it, thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Normally I'd hold this till the end, but I have a feeling more people are watching right now. I just wanted to note that outside, but nearby to Albany, Gilman between Fourth and Second Street is slated to close tomorrow morning, starting at 6:00 AM. For an estimated seven weeks, there will be a detour, but I just want to get the word out.
Thank you for doing so. We're going to have such great roads in and around Albany in like two weeks. It's going to be great. That brings us to Good of the City. This is for persons wanting to address the council on agenda items not on the agenda. Please raise your hand now, by phone, press star nine. By state law, known as the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda except under extraordinary circumstances. Rather, items raised will be referred to future agenda or staff for comment. And in this and all comments and questions during the meeting, please address the council and respect each person that has spoken. We want everyone to feel comfortable speaking and not feel intimidated by others' comments. City Clerk?
Go ahead, Peter. Peter, I think there's an audio issue. We can't understand from what you're saying. Can you try to log back in? I'll let you back in a little bit later after another speaker. Thank you.
Good evening, this is Jeremiah. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Oh, thank you. Sorry I couldn't attend the expo this weekend. I was helping a family member out that was having some health issues. But I was going to be sharing a table with Berkeley Food Network because Elaine's Love Community Food and Laundry Program, all the food comes from the Berkeley Food Network. It's about 300 to 400 pounds a week every Thursday. And let's see, I feed about anywhere between 100 to 150 people in Albany. There's regulars that come every week along with a bunch of middle schoolers. It's so great to be able to provide a venue to where middle schoolers and students can volunteer their time after school. Luckily, Thursdays is their day they get out early, so a good number, about 20 to 30 middle schoolers, walk down together on the park tracks, and between three and six middle schoolers volunteer their time to pass out food to the community. It's such a wonderful, a wonderful thing. So it's every Thursday, 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM at the Solano Community Laundromat, and it's on Talbot and Solano. And that's basically what I do in the community. I couldn't attend the expo, but this is definitely Community Service Week during your proclamation, and I'm definitely doing my part. It's a lot of work. I mean, I'm only one man, but it really goes to show that, you know, one person really can make a difference in this world if you just try a little bit. So I do my best. I try to provide a food resource to the community every Thursday in honor of my wife Elaine that passed away two and a half years ago from COVID. And it's hard to believe it's almost been three years. Not a day goes by without me thinking about her, but I definitely do this in her honor. That's why it's called Elaine's Love. She always read a verse, "Three things remain, faith, hope, and love, and the greatest of all is love." So that's why I named it Elaine's Love. She was just so generous, she's so kind, so loving, and so even though she's not here, part of her soul is still here, spreading love through the community, through me, and volunteers. I think it's a great resource, and I'm so thankful for the Berkeley Food Network to allow me to go get food every Thursday, and I'll keep doing this forever as long as I can see me doing it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Peter, go ahead and try again.
I'll try this again. Is this any better?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. I had two things I wanted to comment on. One, I wanted to second all the comments about the Albany Expo over this past weekend. I thought it was a wonderful event, and I appreciate all the work that all the staff put into that. I did have a booth there, and Kate Miller was our contact person, and she did a great job. I don't know who else was involved with the organization, but I thought it was a wonderful event and very well organized and, I believe, well attended. So thanks so much for that. Second thing, I'm curious about the traffic situation on Canes. I don't drive on Canes very often, but I believe it is now two-way traffic along Canes where it used to be one-way. I'm not sure everybody recognizes that. I know when I've, I might be wrong, but if I'm not, and it is two-way traffic for automobiles as well as bicycles, I don't think there are any signs to alert people that it is, in fact, two-way traffic for automobiles. And I've driven out from Canes in the opposite direction from what most people are used to, and I get nasty looks. So I'm just curious if there's going to be any signage put up to alert people to the fact that it is two-way vehicular traffic along Canes. And I presume Adams also, although I haven't been on Adams, so I don't know what the situation is there. So thanks very much.
Thank you for your comment and for dealing with technical difficulties. I think on the Canes and Adams, we're going to talk about that more completely on the last item on our agenda, so we will hold, talking about it further till then, but thank you for noting it.
Well, I will just confirm it is two-way for both motorists and cyclists while we're on it, and we will come back to it later.
Yep. That brings us to our consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion, and there'll be no separate discussion of them unless the city council member, a member of the public, wants there to be. So I will ask, are there any council members who would like to pull an item for separate discussion? Seeing none, I think. Is there any member of the public who'd like to discuss a separate item?
Yeah, I believe it was 79 and 710 2B.
Okay, are there any other members of the public who want? Okay, then we'll go to item 79, which is budget appropriation for City Hall gutter replacement project. And please go ahead with your comment.
Yeah, good evening. So I'm wondering if that includes the police station because it's all one building? Or is that just the city hall? So that would consist of maybe three different walls? That's a lot of money for rain gutters. I was wondering if that includes downspouts or just the gutters itself? I know if I was able to bid on that job, I would do it for a lot cheaper, probably. I was wondering if I could figure out what type of materials are used? Is it vinyl gutters? Are they going to be copper, which lasts about 30 years? Are they going to be zinc, which lasts about 80 years? I'm just wondering the quality of the gutters and, you know, it doesn't include the police department, maybe the fire department, but I know the city hall and the police station are kind of one building. It just seems like a lot of money for some rain gutters. You know, I'm just kind of stumped here. I mean, I know you could buy probably 10 acres of land somewhere in Northern California for the same price as installing rain gutters on a building. It just doesn't seem, I just don't really understand what's going on. But I don't know when the bids went out for that job or who's doing it. I mean, is Public Works going to be doing it because it's a public building? I know I've put up rain gutters in the past. It's pretty simple. You just need basically a ladder, a few tools, screw gun, maybe some nails, but depends on what works, and maybe you might have to weld it depending on what kind of rain gutters it is. But I was just wondering if the city looked into alternate bids to reduce the spending because that amount of money is basically half of what we spend a year on crossing guards. So it's like, what's more important, you know, crossing guards or rain gutters? I mean, are the rain gutters we have now damaged? Do they not work? Anyway, I guess you get the point.
It's just a lot of money for some rain gutters, and I just have a couple of questions on that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. All throughout the city staff, I'm imagining we don't have the material of the rain gutters offhand, but if you'd like to respond to anything else there.
Sure, Mayor. Yes, as noted in the staff report, the police station gutters were replaced in 2015, so this is the remainder of the replacement work. It's essential for the City Hall complex and public safety to receive this because it protects the integrity of the facilities. And otherwise, we could have water damage to the facilities that could impact our ability to deliver services. Also, as noted in the staff report, staff reached out to several service providers to get a sense of what the cost could be to be anticipated. We will further the work if the appropriation of funds is authorized to determine the actual cost through a service provider as a next step.
Thank you.
I'll just offer the, the previous meeting when I was on parking my, my bike, it was a clear night, and it was raining where my bike was, and I realized it was the gutters. So I definitely appreciate and support this item. Thanks.
That brings us to item 710, the Annual Street Rehabilitation Program and Traffic Calming Citywide Project. And please make your comment.
Hey, Jeremiah here again. Yeah, just one quick question. I was wondering where the eight speed humps are gonna be installed? I'm not sure how to download and look at the manager's report. I used to pick it up when I went to the City Hall meetings in person, it was over there. And I was just wondering the locations of the, the speed humps, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. City Manager, do we know exactly where those are?
Good evening, everyone. The speed humps that are going in were previously approved by Transportation Commission, I believe in 2016 and 2019 perhaps? I might be misremembering. It might be 2018. They're located on the 500 block of Masonic, 1,000 block of Masonic, and 1,000 block of Key Route Boulevard.
Thank you. And I will note for accessing agenda materials with how our system works now, you can always just click on the item, and it should bring up a dropdown that allows you to either download or view online the staff reports and any other attachments. With all that said, I believe that brings us to the end of our discussion for the consent agenda, so I will look for a motion.
I will move the consent calendar. Approval of the consent calendar.
I'll second.
It's moved and seconded. City Clerk, will you please have the roll?
Councilmember Lopez?
Yes.
Iceman Micky?
Yes.
Mayor Tiedemann?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Yes.
And Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That brings us to our first presentation of the evening. It's a presentation on the Housing Authority of the County of Alameda. Oh, and I was looking at staff, but I have a thing to read, I think. One moment, why pull it up? We are being joined by Kurt?
Wiest.
Wiest, thank you, who is the Executive Director of the Housing Authority of Alameda County and the Preserving Alameda County Housing, where he leads the management of a variety of affordable housing programs and properties for persons of limited financial means. He returned to Haka in 2020 after a 14-year absence while serving as the Executive Director of Brennerton Housing Authority. And he has held a senior position with Management in Haka, including Deputy Director. Previously worked for Polk County Housing Authority, began a professional career as the Housing Authority of Salt Lake. Kurt, over to you.
Thank you. I really appreciate the opportunity to be here. I have titled these "A Brief Introduction to the Housing Authority of the County of Alameda." I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I, I celebrate the ceremonial matters because each of the four touched me deeply, this being Affordable Housing Month, something that I have, have a great deal of passion for. I've enjoyed a great relationship over the years with EPO and many other organizations here in the Bay Area. Also, in recognition of Asian American Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, I spent two years as a young adult, as a volunteer missionary in the jungles of the Philippines, and I have a deep appreciation for the Philippines and for, for Asia. Proclamation number three, Older Americans Month. I'm, I'll turn 66 at the end of this month. I am, there is no question that I am an older American now. Kind of fudge it, it's 55 or 60, 65, but I'm, I'm there. And then lastly, proclamation on public service recognition. This is now my 40th year in public service. I have enjoyed every day as an opportunity to serve my communities that, where I've lived both professionally and as a volunteer. I wanted to use this time and appreciate the, the invitation from Peggy McQuade and this council to educate you about your housing authority. Your housing authority is the Housing Authority of the County of Alameda. There is no Albany Housing Authority, although there could have been. And those are political decisions that were made beginning in the late 30s and up to today. You could perhaps create your own public housing authority, but for reasons we won't go into tonight, you are represented by the Housing Authority of the County of Alameda, and I stand before you as your Executive Director. Anne, if you could go ahead and move into the next slide. I want to just give you highlights, things that I think that you as decision makers, as council members, as staff, and the community, those that are here and those that are participating remotely, should know about the Housing Authority of the County of Alameda. What our purpose is. We exist for this reason, to deliver housing and housing assistance and services to people that have limited financial means, people that have, are low, very low, or extremely low income, which in, in, in statistical terms are people that have an income that is 80% or below area median income. The vast majority of those that we assist through this agency have an income that is very low or extremely low, below 30% of area median income. And our primary focus is, is two very vulnerable groups. Number one, those that are elderly and persons with disabilities, and also those who are not elderly or disabled, but because of limited financial means, they need rental assistance. I'll go in and give you some sobering statistics about who we serve and who we don't serve, which is, I think, even more important to understand. Moving on to the next slide, Anne, our jurisdiction are these cities and communities. I always begin, when people ask who we cover, the City of Albany. Not just geographically, but it's at the northern end of our jurisdiction. We cover Albany, Emeryville, San Leandro, Hayward, Union City, Newark, Fremont, Dublin, Pleasanton, unincorporated areas of the county, including Castor Valley, Ashland, Cherryland. The cities of Berkeley, Oakland, Alameda City, and Livermore have their own public housing authority. And those entities, large such as Oakland, very small like Livermore, provide the same kind of services within the geographic jurisdiction. Housing authorities are a public entity. They are enabled by both federal and state legislation, and they provide a specific service. We are very much like a mosquito abatement district or a school district. We provide a specific government function, public purpose, within a specific geographic area. And our geographic area is the cities that are listed in, that I've cited and are listed in the presentation. Moving on to the next slide, Anne, a little bit about our governance. The Housing Authority Governing Board is the Board of Supervisors, but they have delegated almost all of the policy guidance and day-to-day operations to a housing commission. And that housing commission has representatives from each of the cities that we provide housing-related services to. It's a, it's a large board, has 12 members on it. We meet once a month, on the second Wednesday of the month. And currently, our board chair is Peggy McQuade, representing the City of Albany. Peggy was instrumental in bringing me back to the Housing Authority a few years ago, and I appreciate her leadership and her steady guidance to us as we try and navigate, you know, the, the great need for affordable housing in our jurisdiction. Moving on to the next slide, about our funding. The primary source of funding for our operations come from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development in the form of administrative fees and renewable funding grants that support the programs that we operate. And I'll talk about those programs in just a moment. A secondary source, much smaller source of revenue for the Housing Authority, is the rents that we receive from those that live in properties that are owned and managed by the authority. It's a very small number, 230 units. And the, the rents that we receive are, are income restricted. So the residents that live in one of those 230 units are paying a rent that's affordable to them, roughly 30 to 40% of their monthly income. So it is far less than a market rent. And, but the revenue that we receive of their portion is what we use to meet our operational costs. And I think the third bullet point is, is probably one of the most important that you need to know as, as elected officials and as staff and as members of the community. We have no taxing authority, and we do not receive any funds from the City of Albany, general funds or any special allocations. We've never come to the City of Albany or any of the other cities and asked for contributions for our operations. It's not to say that I wouldn't accept any contributions from the general fund or special allocations, but that's just not how we are funded nor what our expectation is to meet our operational costs. The next slide, I want to talk about what programs we operate. On any given night, there are 7,500 households in our jurisdiction that have the benefit of safe, decent, and affordable housing. Our biggest program is, is called the Housing Choice Voucher Program or Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher Program. It is a tenant-based program generally that, in essence, qualified household is given a piece of paper called a voucher, and they, with our assistance, go out in the open market and among all of the privately owned or publicly owned, such as through nonprofits, seek a landlord that would be willing to rent to them and accept the voucher. Voucher participants pay rent that's tied to their income, it's roughly 30 to 40% of their monthly income, so it's affordable to them. And the difference between what the qualified family pays and what the landlord is asking as a contract rent, the Housing Authority pays in the form of a rent subsidy. On the first of every month, the Housing Authority of the County of Alameda pays out approximately $12 million in rental assistance to landlords who are participating in the Housing Choice Voucher Program. We also cooperate with Alameda County's Housing and Community Development Department on some local programs with 198 units or 198 households receive rental assistance there. And then I already mentioned the 230 apartments that we own and manage through our nonprofit affiliate, Patch or Preserving Alameda County Housing. And these units that are, are owned by the Housing Authority, managed, are located in Emeryville, Union City, and unincorporated county near the, the border of Hayward. So that, that's, those are our programs. That's what we operate, what we manage. We have a staff of 70 employees to qualify individual households for participation, requalify them on an annual basis. We have a staff of inspectors that do annual inspections of properties. We have a maintenance staff that maintain our properties. We have a finance staff, purchasing staff, all of those individuals needed to further the, the operational needs of the authority. Moving on to the next slide, I wanted to go into a sliver of a program that we operate called project-based vouchers, and it has a tie-in to what was mentioned today about satellite affordable housing associates or SAHA's project that's going to have a ribbon or a groundbreaking on May 11th. We are given the ability by the federal government, who gives us allocations for funding for our programs, to set aside up to 20% of the vouchers that we have and, and nail them in place so that they're no longer mobile. And so they are in high demand from nonprofit developers like SAHA and, and EAH and Mid Peninsula and Eden Housing and other developers. And they are a way to expand the number of affordable housing locations where individuals can take a voucher or receive a rental subsidy. We have, in the City of Albany, we have five project-based vouchers that have been set aside for the SAHA project. We're very pleased those are the first five project-based vouchers that we've been able to allocate to the City of Albany. We decided from a strategic standpoint, in our round of funding for these very scarce project-based vouchers, to target those portions of our jurisdiction that had been underserved, and Albany was at the top of that list. And we received an application from, from SAHA, and we're able to set aside five housing choice vouchers, which will, in essence, make it possible for at least five families that are going to be living at Albany Family Housing to have a deep subsidy, pay 30% of their monthly income. The Housing Authority will pay the difference over the length of the contract, which will be a 20-year contract and likely be renewed well beyond that. It provides a very important cash flow to the developer to ensure that that project is operational and meets the needs not only of residents, but the greater community, and is well-maintained into the future. The next slide, Anne, I wanted to really end on, no, that's okay, end on some sobering numbers for you to understand about the Housing Authority. One of the most frustrating parts of my job, and this has been for the entire 40 years that I've been working for public housing authorities, is when somebody has a, an affordable housing need, there's been a crisis in their, in their lives, such as a job loss or a medical crisis that has expended all of their financial resources, and they're facing eviction, their need is, is today. And they come into our office, and not only our office, but any of the 3,000 public housing authorities that are scattered across the United States, large and small, and they need assistance today. And what they're told in every public housing agency across the country is, there's a waiting list. And in most cases, that waiting list is closed. And if, even if it were open, and you could fill out that application for rental assistance that's needed today, it's likely that you would have to wait years to receive that rental assistance. We currently, as I mentioned, assist about 70, a little under 7,500 households throughout our, our jurisdiction. The number of households within that same jurisdiction, which includes Albany and, and all the other cities that I mentioned, those that would actually qualify for rental assistance, meaning they have an income that's somewhere between 0 and 80% of area median income, the number of households that would qualify conservatively in that jurisdiction is over 150,000 households. The last time that we opened up our waiting list was in October of 2015. So that's eight years ago. At that time, we received 48,000 applications, and, and we had previously stated that we were going to hold a lottery, and we were going to, out of the total number of applications we received during a two-week period of time, we would be able to place 5,000 households on a waiting list. Essentially, people had a 1 in 10 chance of getting on the waiting list, which would give them the, put them in a position to wait anywhere from zero give them the, put them in a position to wait anywhere from zero to, at this point, probably 15 years to receive a rental subsidy through the Housing Choice Voucher Program. That's a very sobering statistic, and it's very discouraging for public servants like myself and others that work in affordable housing, that when the demand and the need is immediate and our ability to assist is long into the future. So that's very difficult. And our turnover among the 7,500 households that we assist is about 15 a month. Once somebody receives the benefit of a rental subsidy, it's not that they're lazy or feel like they can just sit back and relax now. It is something that is still very much needed. We have program participants that pay upwards to almost the full amount of the market rent. They are working. They're working full-time and they're working in service industries and other enterprises that put them at an income that's 50% to 80% of area median income, and that's still not enough to cover the rent for the average market rate rental in our jurisdiction. So those are sobering statistics. I wanted to end on that and then open it up for questions so that you, as decision-makers and city staff and the community, could have a greater understanding of what public housing authorities do, specifically Alameda County Housing Authority, and how we can continue to strive to meet the needs of those within our community. One thing I didn't mention is that we have some, we have seen some growth recently in the number of subsidies that we receive, but they are targeted to specific populations. Two years ago, we received an allocation of 252, it's called Emergency Housing Vouchers, which came out through the CARES Act to pandemic money. And these are targeted to families and individuals that are currently homeless or about to be homeless. And we've been working through community partnerships and the Continuum of Care Coalition in Alameda County to identify those individuals and families and get those families adequately housed and paying an affordable rent and take them from housing instability to housing stability. So with that, I'm going to stop talking and would be happy to answer any questions that council might have or staff or community.
Thank you for that presentation. Are there any questions from council?
You can always rely on me. So thank you very much for the presentation. That was very educational for me, not knowing much about this area. In our last Housing Element conversation as a body, we raised the possibility, which is in our Housing Element, a possibility, not a commitment, to create, well, to fund some vouchers locally in Albany. How would we do that? We don't know. But it's something to proceed on. So I don't know if you've heard of cities doing that. It seems like it'd be most efficient to come up with the funding and run it through HACA.
I appreciate that, and that is encouraging, and it is actually happening in other communities. The community that I was working in prior to returning to HACA, and this was in 2018, the mayor, who is very sensitive to the affordable housing needs in the city of Bremerton, he came and approached me and said, "If the city were to contribute money from the general fund, could you administer it?" And I was stunned. I said, "Of course we can, and we'll do it really well." And we worked with the city to design a program that met what we perceived at that time to be the most emergent need, and that is short-term rental assistance for those households that were experiencing the immediate disruption in their households, such as a loss of a job or a reduction in hours or an emergency car repair that if didn't get taken care of, they were not going to be able to get to work. And our determination was an assistance of one-time, assistance of anywhere from $500 to $2,000 would be enough to keep a family stably housed. So we set up that program using funds that the city donated that were matched by the Housing Authority through its local fund. And we had that program up and running, and it was going great. And then March of 2020 hit. And we, and all of a sudden, we're in a different world with the pandemic and businesses were shutting down. But also, Congress acted swiftly, and money available through the CARES Act came, and we were in a position to just pivot. And we already had an infrastructure set up to be able to just take that money and supplement it to what we already had. So we would be very interested in working with the city on exploring how a locally-administered program would work and whether it's the Housing Authority administering that or other partners. I think there's a number of things that could be looked at to meet and match what the need is in the city of Albany.
Yeah, it'd be interesting, because it'd be a sort of a reverse situation, because we have the funding and have set up a program like that using federal funding. And so it's an interesting prospect to try to come up with local funding to continue that once the federal pandemic relief funding runs out. So thank you. And do you know, did Bremerton, or do you know of any other city that actually raised funds for this as opposed to just making an allocation from their general fund?
I know there are others out there, and it would be a quick Google search to find out.
Okay.
Have set them up.
Okay, great. Thank you.
First, I just want to say thank you for the presentation and giving some solid background on, or insight on what happens in the background in terms of housing in the county. I'm very familiar with what goes down in my hometown and home county of Contra Costa County, our neighbors. And, you know, now being on the other end and, you know, decision-making, being at the decision-making table, having grown up with many of my friends who were on Section Eight housing and many whose families still are, to know that I'm now in a capacity to help make decisions that could benefit folks. Something I did learn today, though, is Oakland, Alameda, Berkeley, and Livermore have their own Housing Authority program. And so, and you don't need to answer this question if you don't feel comfortable answering it, but immediately what sprang to my mind was, is this an advantageous model where some of the larger local city governments in our county operate in a quasi-independent capacity? Meaning, does it relieve HACA of expending resources and program? Or does it create unintended challenges?
I think I understand the question. We work very closely together, even though we are separate entities with separate governing boards. We have a meeting every two weeks among the five housing authorities. Actually, we include Contra Costa in that conversation. It's usually a one-to-one and a half-hour conversation where we, because we are operating essentially the same programs, but we have our own individual challenges and we're able to learn and grow and assist each other. I will say that a very small housing authority is a very difficult entity to operate. There's economies of scale. We do a lot of work with the Livermore Housing Authority to help them continue to stay afloat. We do some economies of scale and assistance with them. So I'm not saying, "Well, city of Albany, you need to go out there and start your own housing authority." That would be a really challenging thing to do. But I think there are ways that we are constantly exploring how we can work better together. One of the things that we've talked about for quite some time is shared waiting lists so that individuals aren't fighting this battle of which list can I get on? Again, the need is today, not five years or 10 years from now. And so I think we're getting some good traction on making sure that we're creating efficiencies in an environment of a very scarce commodity. And I'm going to use that as kind of a segue to answer the question that might be burning in your mind is, well, what can I do as an elected official? And one thing that I would say, both for elected officials and staff, is advocacy for programs that work. One program that is a clear benefit to the communities where it is being utilized is the Housing Choice Voucher Program. It works. It provides stability at very little cost to those that fund these programs, which is the taxpayers. It does, it's relying on the private sector generally, who already owns or has developed and holds and manages housing and provides simply a third-party, federal funds managed by a local housing authority to provide the rental assistance. It's working, has worked for 40 years. It's a, so in every opportunity, I would suggest that you have conversations with those who are in a position to allocate those dollars. Certainly, we're competing against education and defense and transportation and all of those other pulls of federal resources, but I think the less than 1% that the federal budget that goes to affordable housing, maybe there's, we can go just a little bit more, and it would make a huge difference in our communities.
I now have a follow-up question. You said a trigger word for me, stability. And I know housing, having access to affordable housing for folks that are in a struggling situation is just part of the equation in achieving emotional and financial stability and just stability around basic needs. And it can become very nuanced. You know, oftentimes, the same folks who are looking for affordable housing in our county are also the same folks looking for equitable and accessible social services in the county. And that can be a challenge. And I say that from personal experiences, even recently, being denied social services because no one communicated with me. Off tangent, but worth having a conversation another time with my friends up here. But you had mentioned earlier in your presentation in 2015, there are about 3,000 people that still remain on the waitlist. And so I'm curious, for those folk that do remain on the waitlist, because I know waiting for information is stressful. It had me, I think, losing hair at a very young age as a younger member of this community, not getting any form of communication. And so I'm curious, what does communication look like for those people that remain on the waitlist? Because I'm very much familiar with many anecdotal stories of people getting letters over a decade later, saying that they're finally eligible for housing, which is great that a spot opened up, but this is now when these folks, you know, thankfully have moved on and were able to navigate through, you know, educational system most of the time to have that financial mobility and social mobility. But I say that, I give all that context just to really try to understand what does emotional stability look like for someone who's on that waitlist?
We do try and stay in contact through regular letters in the language that is identified in their application. So asking, "Are you still interested?" is the need there. Obviously, the frustration is with a population that is vulnerable and, at least at the time of application, likely housing unstable, unstable, they may not get that letter. So we have a process of, if they don't get the letter and then they come back later and say, "Well, I never got the letter," we will put them back on the list if they can just demonstrate quite simply and reasonably circumstances of that.
More questions come to mind. So in terms of the tenant-based or housing choice vouchers, I guess, I don't know if those are synonymous or not. A question that came up when we were deliberating this in the Housing Element was, can you really have a, can you really have one of those that's specific to a city? I mean, my understanding of, say, a Section Eight is a person can take that or a household takes that wherever they go. So do you know of any tenant-based voucher programs that are city-specific?
Well, let me nuance that a little bit.
Sure.
The original program, as enabled by legislation in the 1973 Housing Act, was the creation of the Section Eight Housing Certificate Program. I don't know what Section Seven or Section Nine were, but Section Eight said, "You go out and partner with the private sector and we'll provide a rental subsidy." It was in response to a perceived public perception that public housing, as had been known from 1937 until in the early '70s, was a failure, that we were building big projects in poor neighborhoods and they were becoming pockets of crime and poverty. And so Congress in the early '70s said, "There's got to be a better way." And that's when the Section Eight program was created. It has been retooled a little bit over the years, and it's now called the Section Eight Housing Choice Voucher Program. The operative word there, and this is a long answer to your short question, is it's choice. It allows individuals to take that voucher. It's allocated by the local housing authority where an individual receives it to go out and find their own place. There are rules associated with administering the program that say, if you get it from the Alameda County Housing Authority, you need to use your voucher within that jurisdiction for the first 12 months. You can't go to Thedford, Nebraska and shop their waiting list because it might be a lot shorter. You have to live in Thedford for, you know, 12 months, and then you can move elsewhere. Going back to tenant-based versus project-based, the housing authorities were given the ability about 20 years ago to take a certain percentage, 20% of all of the vouchers they've been given funding for, to tie them to a specific property. So we'll use the perfect example of Albany Family Housing, which has received five vouchers. They are going to set up their own separate list. As they have vacancies initially and over time, they will draw from qualified families that are on their own list. Same time, individuals who receive a regular voucher from the Housing Authority of the County of Alameda can approach them and say, "Would you take my voucher?" And they may take that voucher for one of the 60 other apartments that are there. If, for those five, though, apartments that are under a project-based voucher contract, as a family leaves with their voucher, and they, again, the same rule applies, they have to use it for at least the first 12 months. But if they choose to go in month 13 or month 338, they can take that voucher and it becomes mobile, and they can use it anywhere in Alameda County or anywhere in the United States. And they are replaced by another family, either from the site-based waiting list for that project or from the housing authorities. There will always be at least five voucher holders living at SAHA's new project. There may be more. In fact, I would be shocked if there weren't more, that these mobile vouchers are used in that project. The whole purpose was to make sure that there is an adequate supply of rental housing that will accept a voucher. Now, there is legislation in Alameda County and the state of California and most states in the United States where a protected class is households or individuals that have a voucher. You cannot deny somebody rental, renting a property in the city of Albany and Alameda County and all of California, simply by saying, "We don't take Section Eight." You used to be able to do that, but you can deny for other nondiscriminatory, you know, non-protected classes. You can deny based on their inability or previous bad rental history or things like that, but race, religion, sex, gender, familial status, those other protected classes. Protected class now is being a holder of a Section Eight voucher. You cannot deny them solely for that reason. And that shows, from my perspective, a maturing of people's understanding of how the voucher program works. Landlords that understand this program, and most do, appreciate the value of a housing choice voucher because they know that the tenant who is going to be moving into their property, number one, is going to be paying a rent that's affordable to them, it's based on their income. So they're far more likely to pay their rent on time and in full. Number two, they have waited years and years and years to get the benefit of that voucher. They are not going to jeopardize it by doing something foolish, like not paying their rent on time or violating the terms of a rental agreement. Because once they lose that voucher through an eviction, they will, in all likelihood, never get it back.
Thank you.
Another long answer to-
Yeah, yeah. Well, so I'm, when I'm- Well, so I'm, what I'm getting is creating a local housing choice voucher program that will be transportable only in Albany would be a strange thing to do.
It's been done.
Oh, it has been done? Okay. Well, maybe I'll contact the chair, and she can talk to you and we can find out some-
We could work on that together.
Some models.
Find some, some models.
Yeah, yeah. And somebody asked me, you know, given the expensive building, new residences, why, why aren't, why aren't all the vouchers, housing choice vouchers? Why, why do we, as a society, spend so much money building specific affordable residences when it seems like that same capital, if it were invested and you, you know, spent the income, you could probably provide affordable residences in the open market for people through housing choice vouchers?
I'll give you my, my personal observation there. I think a healthy community has a wide range of housing options. I will digress slightly here in that we have created a housing crisis in this country because we have under-invested at all levels of housing, very expensive, all the way down to the most affordable. There has been a, a lack of investment in housing for the last two decades, and we see it very graphically now on the number of people that are homeless on the streets of this community and every other in the United States. But, you know, how we approach this solution to a very complex problem is, I see it as a mosaic, and that mosaic has lots of little tiles in it. And there are a number of tiles that are the same color, and they work really well together, and that's the housing choice voucher. But there's also a place for an investment in bricks and mortar that is perhaps of a, developed by a nonprofit entity, because you know that it's going to stay affordable for the duration of its, of its lifespan. And private sector housing has a, a way of kind of coming and going as cities go through life cycles of their own. We see apartment buildings that simply are, are, reached a point where it doesn't make economic sense to invest in them anymore, and they're knocked down, and we've just lost a, a part of that mosaic of affordable housing opportunities. We have public funds connected to it in some way through a subsidy, either on a monthly basis or in the construction and long-term financing, it's a tendency that's going to be there for the long haul. That's-
Okay.
That's one reason.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any public comment on this item? Okay.
I put them all asleep.
Oh, I see two now.
Yes, thank you very much. That's a very interesting presentation you've made. I, you may have given the information out earlier. If you did, I don't, I missed it, but I'm curious how to get in touch with you. I represent a group of property, an organization in Albany that is concerned about or works with the rental providers in Albany. And I think there's a lot of misinformation about the Section 8 and HCV program among the property owners. And I'd love to be able to get in touch with you and discuss how to correct that, if that in fact is the case. So I'm just wondering how to, how to get in touch with you.
Great. Mr. Campbell's not a plant. I didn't ask him to ask that question, but I'm glad he did. So a couple of resources that I would point this council and staff and the greater community. Be familiar and feel free to go to our, our website. It's H A C A dot N E T. It's haca.net. It is, I believe, user-friendly. It has, it's rich in information. There's a lot of Q and A's, questions and answers, related to the administration and operation side of the housing choice voucher program for both potential participants, landlords, potential landlords, and the greater community. So that's a, a good resource to go to is haca.net. And then I will also share with you my contact information. I'm happy to field a phone call from anyone. My telephone number is area code 510-727-8513. And then lastly, I will leave my email, and I, again, would be happy to receive questions or concerns or suggestions on, on our operations. And my email is K U R T W at H A C A dot net. It's Kurt W at H A C A dot net. And I will apologize for our phone system. It's using the latest technologies and it's not working real well. So if you can't get through to me, send me that email, and I will get back to you promptly.
Oh, yes. Hi, good evening. I have heard, and it may be incorrect information, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that one of the biggest evictors of tenants are nonprofits as, you know, as they take over buildings in order to make them affordable housing developments, they unfortunately have to evict the folks that are living in there. And I just wondered, is that accurate or inaccurate information? And thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you for the question. My, my strong sense is that that is not correct. There are going to be instances where properties are purchased by a nonprofit housing developer or a public housing agency, and in the process, there may be some moving around of residents as they do the rehabilitation or, but if there are any public funds involved in the project, and there almost always are, participants are covered under the Uniform Relocation Act and have very specific protections, both monetarily and otherwise, related to the, the use of federal funds in a acquisition of a property. My experience is, is I do not see that, where there's an adverse impact when a nonprofit or a public agency acquires housing.
Any further public comment? Bring it back for council comments?
Um, one of, one of the comments raised a question, does, does HACA do market testing for acceptance of housing choice vouchers?
We do not. However, we work with local fair housing agencies who do testing, and we support their, their mission and their purpose. So there is regular testing that is done to ensure that there are no discriminatory practices. And I, I am quite confident from my experience over decades of working with these programs that HUD, which provides the funding federally for these programs, they vigorously prosecute those that are in violation of adult fair housing laws.
And do you know what fair housing organization covers Albany?
I should know this.
That's okay. You've known, you've known a lot tonight, so.
I, I don't-
That's okay.
I will make sure that that information gets provided to-
Okay.
To city staff.
Thanks. Yeah, and I'm, I'm sitting here in part tonight because of the provision of affordable housing, not for myself personally, but my wife is disabled and needs care, and the person who cares for her was lost her previous residence, unfortunately, was going to have to move out of the area. But through, you know, a long and difficult change, she's now in an affordable residence, so she gets to stay in the Bay Area. So I thank you for the work.
I'll just say, thank you for the presentation. It's very good. Also, I had the same thought of, I should know who is the fair housing organization too.
I was looking at you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, no, I'm just as guilty. I don't remember it offhand. What?
I was thinking Echo. Yeah. Echo House.
I think that's right. I, I just also wanted to say of, you know, I think especially the, the statistics you highlighted at the end there illustrate the main thought I have when thinking of all the great work that you're doing, of just what a unfortunate dereliction of duty, I think, this represents on the part of the federal government. If you mentioned that we basically stopped building public housing, and we replaced it with these programs, but we are not, and these programs are great, housing choice vouchers and Section 8, but they are not, how we're funding them now up to the task of, I was thinking when you had that, you know, 7,400 number of, we should be getting, you know, something like quintuple or something even more than that of, of these vouchers, and then you said 150,000 would qualify. So I was being much too conservative in how much we really need. So I, I deeply appreciate the work that you're doing to get this out there to people who really need it, and also wish that we would have more of this, more public housing built, more vouchers given out by the federal government. I know it's, I'm glad to hear it's gotten a little better. I know the guys who run HUD now are a little better than the ones who ran it previously, but there's still a lot of work to do and expansion to, to have happen. Other comments?
I was just going to add in, you know, I've been familiar with the Section 8. I'm a real estate agent, and so any time I do have people purchasing properties and stuff like that, it's always been something that I just try to remind everybody, these are, these are great vouchers to have, great tenants to have. Like you said, the, the security of knowing that your tenant is bringing in the rent and that you're able to continue to keep up your building and, and provide good housing for someone. And I know that the, you know, inspectors are great about coming in, making sure that the safety is taken care of in these buildings and that they qualify to be Section 8 providers. So, and, you know, I just want to share that with, you know, weekly, we have meetings, and it's, we really are, you know, housing shortage just in general is really a big crisis. I mean, we'll, we'll be in office meetings where we'll talk about, you know, there's only a month worth of inventory in Oakland, you know, or in Berkeley or wherever else. And so it really, it's a very eye-opening, you know, challenge that we have, that we have to try to address the best that we can with, and I like your choice of mosaics and different things that, so it's, it's really a combination of a lot of things. And I, I really love the fact that Peter Campbell came on, and I think that connecting, because one of my key things is just really educating everybody, whether you're a property owner, whether you're a renter, whether you're, you know, checking out these programs for the first time, there's a lot of information that needs to be shared. And I know it's really hard to get it out there and get really clear information out to people to where that they can take that information, really understand it, and really use it to strengthen themselves moving forward and helping out others in our community as well. So thank you.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll relay, The Economist had an article regarding a peer-reviewed study that came out that estimated if we didn't have such constricted rules around building housing in just the Bay Area and New York, that the GDP of the entire country would be 5% higher. So always keep that in mind, it's a pretty astounding reality. Thanks.
Kurt, I really did want to thank you for coming out and presenting today. I think the information you're providing is extremely valuable, as my colleagues here at the DIAS said. From personal experience, early in my career, working in architecture and urban design, the firm that I worked for worked on a whole series, HOPE 6 projects, incredible programs really to try and undo some of the harm that early housing projects did in the high rises, and really try and knit neighborhoods together. And I know that the HOPE 6 projects had its successes and it had its failures, I think, but I think on whole, it was a great program. And I think the thing that I, I note is your conversation about the mosaic, that it's going to take all kinds of housing to really solve the issues for everyone at all levels. And that, and to your response to Councilmember Jordan's question about the, the need for building new affordable housing, again, just understanding that if we rely only on the private sector market, there is, we saw this recently before the latest downturn, that the, the market was extremely hot, that there was easy money to be had, and so developers were everywhere. And you see where it happened now with instantly, the market cooled down a little bit, interest rates go up, and now there's no new housing being built. And so we're not helping anyone at any level. And so that need to be able to continually think about how do we help build more affordable housing consistently over the long term is a huge, huge issue. And, and I think figuring out how we get at a federal, state, and local level, how we fund these things, I think is extremely important. So I thank you for your work. I thank you for years of service. And I hope, I hope, given your description of your age, that we could continue to work with you for, for quite a bit more time. So, thank you.
Thanks. I tell you, it's a breath of fresh air to come to a public meeting again and be able to talk to councils and city staff and the general public. Pandemic's been hard on everybody, but I'm grateful to be here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That brings us to our second presentation of the evening, our annual comprehensive financial report and the annual audit for fiscal years 2021, 2022. Please have staffs report.
All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor and council members. Thank you for inviting me out to share with you the results of the June 30th, 2022 audit. All right. So I, I'll start out by kind of describing the audit process and some of our standards a little bit, and then I'll go right into some of the key financial highlights, and then, and then I'll round it up with the audit results. And then I'll take questions, if there are any, after that. So we'll start out with, because the, the city is a local government, we adhere to government auditing standards, those are issued by the generally, Government Accountability Office, they issue auditing standards that we follow, and the AICPA, the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants, they also issue standards for auditing that we adhere to as well. In terms of our audit process, we did it kind of in a two-phase process where about halfway through the year, we came out and we assessed the city's internal controls. And then after the year was over and the city had a chance to close its books, we came back out and we performed additional procedures, standard procedures, analytic procedures and whatnot, basically crunching the numbers to make sure that they were all good. And in terms of the key financial items for the year, if you, if I could reference you to table one of the MDNA, what you'll see here at the very bottom there in the total column, you'll see that the city's net position went up by almost $6 million. So that's a pretty good amount. The, the key items you'll notice is if you look at the liabilities, kind of in the middle of the chart there, it had a really large decrease. And that's really related to the city's retirement plans, so the pension plans and whatnot that you've got. And the way that works, it, the actuaries, actually a couple of years back, so if you remember back a couple of years ago, when the smart, the stock market was really good, these pension plans, they've got assets in them, right? So when, whenever the city and employees make contributions into the plans, those, those funds get invested. And because of those large returns, you see this decrease in the liability. And so that's why you see that large decrease. On the same note, though, because the actuary didn't quite hit the mark in estimating what those returns would be, that difference in that, that assumption of, of returns gets amortized over five years. And so right below the liabilities, like you see that deferred inflow of resources, you see that large increase, that's where, that's where the amortization goes. So that's, that explains kind of these big changes for the year that you see there. Okay, so if we could, if I could reference you to, let's see, to- you see there. Okay, so if we could, if I could reference you to, let's see, to table three, you'll see here, these are the funds. So when the city operates, they're typically operating in the funds, right? So in the funds, you're not going to see your long-term assets and your long-term liabilities. So you won't see the pension liabilities, your debt and the capital assets, you won't see all that. It's a different measurement focus. Because what you guys care about is how are you spending your current resources, the taxes you guys collect, how are you guys spending that, not really your investment in capital assets or your issuance of debt. And so in terms of the funds, which is on a modified accrual basis, you'll see that the funds went up about $4.6 million. So you're up to about 30, just under $35 million. So that's a good fund balance to have. So you're doing really well. And then lastly, I just wanted to bring your attention to a new accounting standard that came out this year, that, a pretty big deal. It didn't have a huge impact on the city, but I wanted to highlight it because it is new. So the balance sheet on page 31, it was GASB 87. And basically, GASB 87 kind of redefined the way we look at leases. And so leases before, the old way, you get operating leases, you have capital leases. So the capital leases, you know, you've got this asset and you've got this liability. With GASB 87, you looked at the operating leases. So the capital leases still exist. They get called purchase financing leases. With your, the old operating leases, you have to do an assessment to see if it falls under GASB 87. And so this whole calculation that's done. But in any, just to simplify things, what you see here on that last line under assets, you see the leases receivable. So that, that's from GASB 87, that's a new line item. And then under your deferred inflow of resources, you see the leases there as well. And so this is on the revenue side, you guys have some lease revenue that's coming in. That's how that's impacting the city. Not a huge number, but I wanted to point that out since it is a new standard this year. Okay. In terms of the audit results, the city's still making progress towards, you know, clearing odds findings, you know. For those of you who've been around for a long time, the city's made great progress over the years. There's still one remaining finding. We had some opportunities there. We're still working through some of that with the city. But overall, we had a clean audit, no disagreements with management. So it's really just kind of fine tuning things. There were some unfortunate things with the turnover and whatnot in key employees of the city, but overall, we had a good audit.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? Seeing none, we'll go to public comment.
Well, yeah, I might, I might have a question. And I don't know if it's for yourself or the finance director. On, in terms of the, the capital assets, I presume there's some, I can't believe I'm spaced on the word right now, but, but amortization of those assets is on depreciation, yeah. And so there must be, and this is kind of getting into our surplus, what we do with the surplus, which is part of, part of this item as well. So we're being asked to allocate the surplus to different reserve funds. But unless I'm mistaken, we're not being presented with what the depreciation schedule is or exposure is for each of those assets that are covered by those reserve funds. But I presume the depreciation of all the assets is known, because that's part of going into the audit. And so I'm wondering if it would be possible in the future outside of the audit, but as a part of the surplus allocation, to get a breakdown of, you know, here's, here's the depreciation for this asset class. You know, it has some assets in it that are 10 years, some that are five if they're vehicles, and that are 30 or 40 if they're building, so that we can actually understand, you know, what are we looking at in terms of how soon the need is and the magnitude of the need in each of the reserve funds? Because I feel like I'm kind of flying
So you're referring to the asset replacement reserve?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. So I'm kind of flying blind. But I, so I guess my question is, I didn't miss that in here, right? That's, that breakdown is not in the audit?
Our finance director is participating virtually as well. Heather, would you like to help address this question?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, sorry. Yes, I, it's not in the audit itself. It is part of the like backup schedules that the auditors confirm that our numbers are correct with. We do have that, but I don't think you're looking for necessarily the entire depreciation schedule. You just want like the asset, the number of years that we plan on, like the useful life of the asset. Is that correct?
Yeah, well, I guess I'm, I'm looking for is, is whatever would come out of that that would inform how much to happen in each reserve fund. You know, so if we have one, the reserve fund that covers one asset area that, you know, there's a million dollars of assets in that, there's another one that covers a million dollars of assets, but one has a five-year depreciation, the other has a 30-year depreciation, you know, then you can come up with a number of how much should we be putting into each of those reserve funds to make sure that the money is there when we need to do replacement.
Right. Yeah. So that is actually something that we've started to address in your biennial budget.
Okay.
Along, we don't have the exact asset, the exact number of years. I'll, I'll look at potentially adding that. But in the reserve fund sheets, we do have a listing of the things that we plan on replacing over the next five years. And I'll look at adding, you know, what the useful life of those items potentially is.
Okay. Or it could be converted to, to, you know, dollars per year. Because as I say, there may be some assets that are covered by a reserve fund that are five, maybe a mix of five years and 30 years items that are covered by the same reserve fund.
Very much so.
So, so if it could be converted to like a dollar value per year effectively, that would, that would be another way out. And I'll complicate it that is to do. Obviously, I've gone way beyond a question and deliberation here. So I will back up and thank you for your work. And Director and Department, thank you for your work. And we'll talk more after public comment.
I, I do have another presentation for the allocation of the fund balance whenever you're done asking Paul, the auditor, his questions.
Okay.
Well, unless there's any other questions for the auditor, I think we could go directly to that report, Heather.
Okay. Let me figure out how to share that. Give me one second. It's been a while. It was also up three times with the new baby last night, so.
Oh, wow. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Or condolences, I don't know. It's a mix of both, I know.
Okay.
You sound, you sound quite coherent, I have to say. It's remarkable.
Good. I'm glad. Am I sharing this?
You are.
I half it out.
Okay, here we go. Okay, so the, Anne, are you sharing it or am I sharing it? Oh, I totally stopped sharing it.
Do you want me to share?
I can share.
You just talked about how coherent I was. Okay. Yeah.
Oh, I've done that.
Great.
I've done that without being woken up three times in the night, so.
Okay, perfect. All right. So the audit that you were just presented is for fiscal year '22, which ended June 30th, 2022. First, I, this did go to the Financial Advisory Committee. It was presented to them at their April 5th meeting, but they did not actually have the document itself prior to the meeting. So they were, presented the information, but they didn't get a chance to really, you know, dig in as some of them probably would have liked to. And they, I did, however, go over the fund balance reconciliation, reallocation recommendations at their March 1st meeting with a, an explanation of where we anticipated the financials to end up. We had a little bit of issue finalizing the audit with some back and forth, but we were good now. So they were, the Financial Advisory Committee was presented with the fund balance reallocation on March 1st. I'll kind of go into some of the things that they've talked about as I go into the detail of what we're asking for reallocation of. But they didn't have, at that time, they didn't have any specific comments for council on the, on the reallocation. So the fund balance analysis there currently is available $11.5 million in the general fund fund balance. The fiscal year '23 budget projected a deficit of $1.48 million. So we reserve that amount from that $11 million. The council has a 25% fund balance reserve policy that they implemented a few years ago. And that is 25% of the current year general fund expenses. And that brings us to about $7 million. That reserve fund, or the reserve balance is to, you know, protect the city against economic downturns or unexpected expenses, you know, natural disasters, things like that. Make sure we have funds on hand if needed. So that means that there's about $3 million above those two items that are available general fund surplus. And that is not your surplus as in your revenue to expenses in fiscal year '22. That is the available surplus in the general fund fund balance. Now, there is a difference between what your, like year-end, what you normally refer to as like a budget surplus is, and what this $3 million is, because we left our fiscal year '21 surplus in the general fund because we still weren't really sure where COVID was going to land. We didn't know kind of where sub-expenses were going. And so we had, we didn't reallocate the fiscal year '21 surplus. So this $3 million is a combination of a couple of things, but that's the amount that is available above the 25% fund balance reserve and above the projected use of the deficit. I do not necessarily anticipate that we will recognize that deficit, but we do still need to account for it. Now you can move to the next slide. Thank you, Anne. So staff are suggesting that we reallocate $2.3 million. And this is, there are three items that we're looking to fund. The Climate Action Adaptation Reserve Fund, which was established last year, it is, you know, tangentially associated with the increase in the utility users tax. We are suggesting that we create and fund a pension reserve fund, and I'll get into that more in another slide. Then we're asking to reallocate $1.4 million for our asset reserve funding. So as I said, the Climate Action Adaptation Reserve Fund was created last year. There's a little over, I think it's 20-something thousand dollars in it. The utility users tax increase when passed by voters had the following language in it. And it says that council will endeavor to spend at least one-third of the increase. Now, again, this is general fund revenue. It can be reallocated for other purposes at any time. However, since there is a surplus, staff are suggesting that we take the difference between what that increase was and the expenses in fiscal year '22 that were identified as associated with the increase, and put the difference, which is the $143,469, in the Climate Action Adaptation Reserve Fund. Next slide, please. So the pension reserve fund. Section 6 of the general fund reserve policy lays out what the council, when they pass the policy, endeavor to use any funds that are available above and beyond that 25%. The first of those is to pay down unfunded pension liabilities. Now, Paul talked about how in the fiscal year '22 audit, it looks like everything is hunky-dory and our pension obligations went down and it's peachy. That is a little bit of a moving target. The actuaries, the actuarial value is going to change year to year. The numbers that you were presented today, calpers ended, and for that actuarial valuation, they had an 18% return on their investment for the end, year ending, I think it was 20, and then it was either 20 or 21. The very next year, they had a negative 6% return. So our fiscal year '23 numbers aren't going to look so great. But again, that is a moving target. It's something that's going to change year to year depending on a number of different factors. But either way, the pension obligations are definitely something that the Financial Advisory Committee has identified as a very high priority. I know that it is also on the council's list of things that they want to look at. And so we are suggesting that we take $775,000 and put it in a reserve fund. Now, this is not necessarily something that is locked in. Council could reallocate it at any time if they needed to. So it will not, on your financial statements, change what the city's unfunded liability looks like, but it does allow us to start planning certain things. Staff are going to, in the next biennial budget, suggest using a portion of it to offset the increase in the unfunded liability payment that's due next year. So we can use some of this to, in our operating budget, offset those increases. We could, if we decide in the future, establish a 115 trust. Excuse me one second. Okay. Establish a 115 trust. We could, you know, use those ones for that, or we could make additional PERS contributions. At this point, we are just suggesting that we set it aside until, I know that the Financial Advisory Committee has a pension subcommittee, and I think that this is a much bigger conversation that we will also have at some point. And just set it aside now, know we're going to use it for pensions, but kind of come up with a good idea for how we're going to use them. Next slide, please. The last thing is we're asking to use 1.4 million of it to fund some of these reserve, some of our reserve funds. I do not have your useful life on here, but some of these also, and with your biennial budget, you're going to be getting a proposed update to the reserve fund policy. Some of these things aren't necessarily assets. They're not tangible objects that you're, you know, going to see, you know, going down the road or whatever. But for example, the community development reserve funds help fund your general plan update or any number of your specific plan updates. So those can, you know, be hundreds of thousands of dollars depending on how detailed the plan is, you know, what we need to bring in. So we really need to make sure that we're planning for those. And those need to be, we do know how often those need to be done. And so when I am able to put everything together, I will also add, you know, how often we think that these plans need to be redone. And you, in, in the last biennial budget, in, I think it was Section 7, we talked, staff had listed out what we anticipated needing to replace in the next five years. We're going to do the same thing when we bring the biennial budget to you guys later this month, where we're going to say, okay, we think we need to replace these things in the next five years. And across the board, I mean, if you think about it, a lot of these numbers, it's not going to be enough overall, but at least we're starting to plan for it. Some of these numbers may seem high, but for example, the IT equipment reserve fund, we're in the process of doing a number of cybersecurity updates and a lot of cyber, or not cyber, but a lot of IT infrastructure updates. And so these are, you know, well thought out by staff and are associated with, especially the IT one, the IT strategic plan that we did. Yeah. So. So, I will stop now. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council on that report?
So, you mentioned the thinking that went into the recommendation for which reserve funds to contribute to, at what rate? I did notice the IT reserve fund, the recommendation will put it at 12x its minimum, whereas most of the funds are at 3x minimum. So, just for the benefit of my knowledge, I know the rationales there, if I could understand a little bit more, is that for hundreds of thousands of servers, or for hiring consultants to do various upgrades, or kind of what's more in that, what more is in that?
Sure. It's primarily implementation of our IT master plan, which is a very detailed document that hasn't necessarily been mainstreamed into funding and implementation. And so, that's really where the bulk of this additional fund comes, as well as a couple of major upgrades. One is our phone system as well, which can get complicated and expensive as we're learning in terms of project management as well.
Okay. Thank you.
I think it's also important to note that the minimums are set by saying, okay, if something breaks, what is it going to cost to replace that one or two things? Whereas, the suggested contributions are for ongoing, like, replacement and repair and things like that. So, the minimums are for emergencies, whereas the suggested contributions are for, you know, planned items.
Thank you for that upgrade, to my understanding.
Heather, I had a question about, you mentioned that the pension reserve fund, those dollars aren't locked in necessarily for having to be used for the pension. In terms of these other reserve funds, are these, in the same way, funds that we're setting aside for either planned projects or for emergencies, but they're not necessarily locked into having to be used for these funds? Or are these, more specifically, actually locked in?
So, sorry, general fund, they're all general fund reserve funds, so any of them could be reallocated at any time, with the caveat that if, going forward, there is the idea to fund some of the EMS reserve fund with the partial tax, which would be locked in for that reserve. So, I will track, through accounting magic, which portion of that is specifically restricted, whereas the majority of this is general fund, can be reallocated at any time if there's an emergency, anything like that.
Right. Thank you. And then, one other question. So, I noted that in the write-up that you all did, it said that these, this policy was really set in place in May of 2020. Do these minimum level of fundings, do we have a set, review this number every five years, or is there like an automatic adjustment to what those numbers are? So that, you know, three years, four years from now, 100,000 is now, 110,000? Just recognizing that cost of everything always goes up? I just want to check that there's either a, every five years we shall review those numbers, or every year that number increases by inflation, or something?
There is no CIP or automatic increase written into the policy. However, it will come to you, a suggested update will come to you with the biennial budget. Again, doesn't, it doesn't update any of those. But, staff do review that and would bring that to council if they felt like an update was needed.
Thank you.
Seeing other council questions? That brings us to public comment. Okay. That brings us to council discussion.
Well, I'm excited about the proposal for the unfunded pension liability reserve. Thank you for that. And if the Financial Advisory Committee was involved, that committee as well. I learned from one of the committee members that, I guess, the current discount rate that's used by calpers is 7%. So, for every million dollars approximately that we contribute beyond what we would need to contribute, we'd realize that savings on our future liability. But, as sort of a matter of real politic, I kind of wonder if in four to five years there's going to be a massive game of chicken between the state and the cities? Because as this ratchets up, there's going to be a lot of cities that can't survive, and they go towards the verge of bankruptcy. And so, I'm kind of worried about free riding and moral hazard, that the state's going to step in somehow and make some cities whole because it can't let, you know, 20, 30, 40, 50 cities go bankrupt. So, I think to that, for that reason also, I think holding on to this money rather than contributing it, so that we maintain control, given who knows what is going to happen over the next decade? Which I know is outside of the strict sort of financial, it's the political economy. But, to me, it's a reality.
Other thoughts?
Yeah, I would echo that. I mean, I appreciate that the pension reserve fund right now, it's just general fund allocation. It's there, we're setting it aside. If we really have to break open the piggy bank and grab that money for a special purpose, it's there. I would hope we try and find every other dollar elsewhere, but I really appreciate that. I appreciate staff's recommendation about adding money into the reserve funds, knowing that we're going to have expenses and that that minimum is, that was helpful for me to understand the minimum was pretty much emergency money, as opposed to emergency money plus being able to actually implement a lot of the, what I would assume are a lot of the planning things that we as a council have already discussed. So, I appreciate the recommendations on contributions.
I'll echo that all, and just add that, you know, there was a time before, I think any of us were really on the council, that these were not as a routine of an item, and we had more difficulties, and it didn't result with something nice, like, we have money to put away for, if we need it for pensions, and to address our, the outlook we have for this next budget. So, I appreciate all the work that's been done to put us on that sound footing. And with that, unless there's any other discussion, I'll look for a motion to, on both the things we have, I think we have to do two separate things here. Or can we do them all in one motion? Okay. Look for a motion.
So, I will move approval of resolution 2023-27. And do I also need to make a motion to accept the audit? Is that how that goes? I don't, I didn't catch that from the agenda.
I don't think that's required, but I'll defer to Heather if she prefers that.
I'm going to say whatever Mala wants is what I want.
Always wise. Just the resolution.
Yeah, so I have to just restrict the motion to passage of the resolution 2023-27.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. City Clerk, may please have the roll.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lopez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mickey?
Yes.
Mayor Tiedemann?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you all. That brings us to our last item of new business, 11-1, a drafting of a contra-flow parking bill. I believe this is Councilmember Jordan.
Thank you, yes. So, this regards the possibility of a state legislative bill to allow contra-flow parking, otherwise left-side parking, or wrong-way parking, pick your term, which is currently not legal under state law on two-way streets. So, this would be a bill to legalize it for the four blocks of Adams and the five blocks of Keynes. They currently have a half diverter at one end, and to only have an entrance in one direction. And, City Clerk, if you want to bring up some slides. So, background of this, you know, it's in the recommendation, the agenda, it's in the report I wrote, but I've been in dialogue with staff for Assemblymember Wicks, who've expressed interest in potentially carrying this bill. So, given that interest, I thought I better look into, you know, what is the possible safety history here? The best that I could come up with was by analogy to various blocks in Berkeley. So, if you go to the next slide, please, City Clerk? Thank you. So, the study steps were, define a study period, and that study period was defined, I defined it as 2011, 2019. 2011 is the first year that there is statewide collision data in the state's database available. The most recent year is 2021, but that's provisional, not finalized. The most recent finalized year is 2020, but obviously, that was a year of substantial disruption in terms of traffic patterns. So, that's why I chose 2019 as the end year for the period. And looked for semi-diverted study blocks in Berkeley. So, there's a number of these blocks in Berkeley that are similar to the blocks that Albany's just created on Keynes and Adams, and these have existed for 50-some-odd years, to my knowledge. So, quite a long time. And I've been observed that some of those have predominance of contra-flow parking. So, then tested that anecdotal understanding by going to Street View, and there's a history function of Street View, where every pass of the Street View vehicle is available to be viewed. So, provided a data set to confirm or disconfirm that these blocks, most motorists park contra-flow on the left side, facing the semi-diverter. And then, Clay Larson submitted a comment that was a good point about parking occupancy. He had a surmise that the parking occupancy on the blocks in Albany was considerably higher than the blocks in Berkeley. So, I went back, and this is post the report that I wrote, this is in response to this comment, to, again, go to Street View and compare the parking occupancy on those streets to parking occupancy on the streets in Albany. And then, finally, look to the collision history. So, if you go ahead to the next slide. So, this is looking into one of the blocks. You can see the semi-diverter there, the half barrier at the entrance to one block. You can see this, in this case, it is a bike boulevard, and you can see motor vehicles that are parked contra-flow or facing that semi-diverter on the left side of the street. If you go to the next slide. This is another block, this is on Milvia. Same thing, it's bike boulevard, you can see vehicles parked contra-flow there. And I'll note that these images are from April 2011, Street View, just to confirm that the semi-divers were in place at the time. If you go to the next slide. And so, this is a block of 10th Street. Again, half barrier, you can see the motor vehicles parked towards the barrier. So, and across the bottom, you can see the different times the Street View vehicle went by, so April 2011, January 2015, December 2015, so on and so forth. So, I counted every one of those, which direction were the vehicles parked on the semi-diverted side of the block. And if you go to the next slide, so this is all the data, and if you hit click again, the bottom line is more than nine out of 10 motorists chose to park contra-flow on that semi-diverted side of the block. So, that confirmed that, in fact, through the history of the study period, most motorists were parking contra-flow on those blocks. And so, then to, yes, please, you anticipated, thank you. So, then to look at occupancy for the Albany occupancy during the study period, conveniently, Albany had a grant-funded parking study that was done, parking management study that was done in 2015, that collected data on parking occupancy. And so, use that as a source. So, if you go to the next slide. And so, these are the maps of the data that came out of it. So, there's four different periods here, you know, midday weekday, evening weekday, midday weekend, evening weekend. This is the San Pablo corridor, San Pablo's running up the middle of this, and you can kind of make out Adams and Keynes, if you go to the next click again. So, this, these lines just bracket the sides of those blocks that are on the semi-diverter side. And so, you can see that categorized occupancy that they measured. See, you can see the categories by color, with darkest green being 0 to 50% occupancy, and red, reddish-orange being 95% to 100% occupancy. Occupancy being how many of the parking spaces that are avail, how many of the parking spaces that exist are actually occupied by a motor vehicle. And so, then I tallied up this data, and if you go to the next slide. And so, that's what that distribution looked like from those counts. So, you can see the, kind of a normal distribution, the median is somewhere around 70, 72, 75% occupancy on these blocks. And so, then I counted from Street View the occupancy on those three blocks in Berkeley. And if you click on the next slide, that's what the occupancy looked like on those streets in Berkeley during the study period. So, you can see a little bit more spread, and maybe a little bit higher occupancy. Particularly, you can see at the 95% to 100% occupancy that the blocks in Berkeley, the study blocks in Berkeley were, had a much higher incidence of that level of occupancy. And so, if you go to the next slide. So, then I looked at collision history, and so, UC Berkeley SafeTrek built a tool long ago, TIMs, it's an acronym, but it's a mapping system for the state collision data. And so, access that system to look at the collision data during the study period, if you go to the next slide. So, this is the block of Milvia that's bracketed there in yellow, and there were no collisions in the study period. And next slide, this is the block of Russell, and there were no collisions. And if you go to the next slide, this is the block of 10th, and there were no collisions. So, there are no collisions on any of these three blocks during the nine-year study period, with more than nine out of 10 motorists parking contra-flow, a couple of them being bike boulevards. If you go to the next slide. So, findings, I just said the first one, covered the second one, the occupancy was the same or greater on these Berkeley blocks. There are no collisions during the study period. And so, to me, this supported the recommendation, to, which the recommendation is to authorize or direct the city attorney to work with the legislative attorneys, attorneys of the state legislature, to develop a draft bill to legalize contra-flow parking on these blocks. Because there's no, there's no, from this, there doesn't appear to be any risk-based reason to make it illegal for people to park on the left side of these particular blocks. It's not true of all blocks, by any means, but these local streets in our area. Thanks.
So, any questions?
Thank you.
Yeah. Any questions from council?
I have some questions. First of all, some of your study blocks, I noticed, like, are quite a bit wider, where there's no collisions, and our blocks are quite a bit more narrow. So, even being able to do a three-point turn, going to go to the opposite direction or something, I can, I worry about more opportunity for collisions on those blocks, just because of the narrowness of the street. Also, I know that these are both technically pilot programs right now. So, I'd be curious about, you know, if we're jumping ahead too quickly by doing something like this, how much is it going to cost us, you know, as far as sending our city attorney to work on this project? So, these are a couple of my concerns, so.
Yeah, I would say on the street width, I mean, that's definitely a difference, and ideally, there would have been similar width streets available locally to, with the history. I would say on the three-point turn aspect of it, requiring three-point turns on narrower streets would seem to be, without data, probably more likely to lead to collisions, and probably not injury collisions necessarily, but collisions. Which I do want to emphasize that this state database is an injury database, not a property damage database. So, it didn't, it doesn't provide information in that regard. But, to the extent that there's concern about three-point turns, it would seem that not requiring three-point turns on these streets would be more important than not requiring three-point turns on Berkeley streets, because they are wider, so it's easier to make a three-point turn on the streets. In terms of the pilot study aspect, the bill could certainly be constructed as a pilot study. The, I think I put in the report that I wrote, that the city of Long Beach got a carve-out for some tens of blocks to allow contra-flow parking, and that was done as a three-year pilot study. So, that's an approach that could be, could be taken. I was sort of saying, in this case, Berkeley's done the pilot study, so I would I was sort of saying, in this case, Berkeley's done the pilot study, so I would want to avoid the cost of having to do everything that is required in the Long Beach bill in terms of engineering studies before and after, because that would be an added expense. But that's, that's a council decision, that's where I'm at at this point. And then in terms of the cost, I would have to refer to staff to what the cost is to have the city attorney's office engage on this.
If we model it after the City of Long Beach bill, which I'm looking at, because my thought was as well as yours, is that maybe we would avoid some of these professional engineering studies and whatnot. I don't know how, I don't know that it would take that much time, because I think it's kind of already written out, we just make some modifications to match the Albany situation. They have certain things about dead ends with no cul-de-sacs that, you know, we might want to remove and whatnot, but, you know, and I don't think it would take too much time. It just depends how much back and forth we would be going back with, and I don't know, I would presume we'd want to bring back a draft to council before we engaged.
Yeah, well, I mean, my suggestion would be that the council would provide direction that allows you to engage with Assemblymember Wick's staff, because they're the experts, and they kind of know.
What would pass.
What's more likely to fly and what isn't going to fly.
Got it. So maybe it's taking the Long Beach model, modifying it and working with their staff, and then, and then coming back before they do anything with it.
Right.
To make sure the council's comfortable with it, because there is a, as you mentioned, the Long Beach model is a pilot program, I think, for three years.
Right, right. And, and I mean, we, we could internally, should it pass not as a pilot program, we could set an internal policy that, that we're only utilizing this as a part of the pilot. In other words, if the council reverses the pilot at the end, then, you know, this, this would go away. And also in terms of the state, the state bill, the legislative bill being cast as a pilot, I mean, I would hold that back as a potential point of negotiation to garner further support. It's always a good tactic in negotiation. I mean, there may be assembly members who wouldn't vote for it if it isn't a pilot, so then we can put that on, put that on the table.
And when, when exactly would they be voting for it then? I mean, in the long scheme of timeline?
Yeah, so we're, we're late in the session, obviously. There is a possibility for what's called a gut and amend, which is there's 2,600 bills were submitted, of which about 1,000 were placeholders essentially. And so those can be, language of those can be replaced with kind of anything else after the committee process. That's probably the only way this could flow at this time. And so the, they ultimately, if it were to happen this session, the session schedule, the deadline for passage of our decision on all bills outstanding is basically near the end of September.
I'm just wondering also, too, just the priority of this. I mean, it doesn't seem like a very high priority item realistically. And I'll just say, you know, from listening to the community around and a couple of the neighbors on some of the affected blocks, from what I'm hearing, it's not a really popular program for a lot of people who live on those blocks, so I do have some concerns on that. I also haven't really seen it used very well, but I'm also understanding, too, from some of the emails and some of the comments that we've heard as well, is that people are just generally still confused. And, and they're, you know, nobody knows exactly how to maneuver these changes specifically. So I would want there to be definitely some more outreach and some more, you know, maybe signage, I think, some of the things that were being said. And those, those are just kind of the things that are bubbling up the top of my head, so.
If not, we can go to public comment.
No questions.
Okay. Then let's take it to public comment.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Peggy McQuaid, and among other things, a former member of the Traffic and Safety Commission. And I've got several thoughts, several comments, questions about this proposal, some of which you've actually already answered, but I'm going to say them anyway. Before you start thinking about changing the state law, you should think about why we don't do contra-flow parking. And despite what Councilmember Jordan has mentioned, that it is safe, I think there's a real difficulty in seeing vehicles, and especially bicycles, coming towards you when you're parked in a contra-flow position. So I think you really need to think about that. It's also confusing to have different rules on different streets. Some of you might recall the problems and the unintended consequences that ensued when parking on the sidewalk was allowed on Washington Street on the Hill. It took us years and countless hours of meetings to unwind that practice. And I have to agree with the, even what Mr. Campbell said much earlier, and what Councilmember Romero said, that people are just totally confused still. And, you know, originally, it was going to be 30 days of warning and notification of the new parking requirements, and then potential sighting. And I'm curious if any of this actually happened. I did a little research on the Long Beach project, and I'm, I'm not sure it's an apples-to-apples comparison. Those streets go off of the main street in, in Long Beach, and there's water at both ends, so they, they both dead-end. And they're primarily multifamily housing, so they're not thoroughfare streets like ours are. They're one block on each side, and they end. So that was, I think, why they changed the law there. So I don't think it's a really fair, very good comparison. I'm curious about the cost, especially if we have to do a lot of engineering, and what the legal cost would be. This was designed to be a one-year pilot project, and so trying to change the whole state law, just for Albany, before we decided if we've actually met the goals of the project seems a little bit premature. And it won't be a quick fix. So in, while we're waiting for this to be resolved, what's going to happen? Are we just going to ignore the way people are parking? Are we going to enforce it? It's, it's all just still really confusing to, I think, the general public, and I think we need to do a better job of communicating all of this to them. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Councilmembers, Michael Barnes here, former council member, current transportation commissioner, avid bicycle commuter. I have four comments, so I need to get to them quickly. One is, this is a research project in my mind. It's, it's a pilot, and when you do a research project and you do them appropriately, and I say this as a science editor from UC Berkeley, you lay out your research program, you specify the evaluation criteria you're going to do, use, and you do this all a priori, and then once you've run your research program, you use those criteria to evaluate it to see whether it worked or not. There's a real problem, and no good scientist will look at their initial data and go, oh, we're going to modify our research program to conform to our data. That's what you don't do. You don't move the goalposts mid-process. So my strong suggestion is, if you want to get a good evaluation out of this project, you let it run the course for a year. We have public meetings, we take evidence from the public as to what worked, what didn't, how they felt about it. We can look then at evidence of collisions or whatever. But I think you should, you know, stay the course and get this done. Okay. Secondly, about the legislature. If you go through the regular committee process, as Mr. Jordan mentioned, it's too late. And if you go that route, you will not get a bill signed by the governor until October of 2024. This project is only one-year project, it will have been done for six months by the time you get a bill out of the legislature. Now, you can do the gut and amend process, but the gut and amend process creates resentments in Sacramento. It's kind of bad form. I would not want to risk Albany's credibility on doing a gut and amend process. Personally, number .3. Mr. Jordan gave you a photo of the intersection of Milvia and Cedar. I have ridden my commute bike through that intersection 5,000 times in my 11-year career at UC Berkeley, because I bike commuted every day. Milvia is a very safe street, it's very wide. I have also recently ridden my bike on Canes. There is no comparison. I mean, just go drive them both in your cars, you'll see right away what I mean. Milvia's very wide, it doesn't, it never appeared to me to have that much parking. So I don't think what happens in Berkeley is a good comparison to Canes or Adams. Finally, please don't make this a bait and switch, because that's what it's going to appear like to the public, and it will make the public more cynical, and it will, I think, damage the credibility of the city. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi, my name is Carrie Schulman. I, I'm a big fan of the bicycle boulevards. I live near the middle school, and I have a 10-year-old and an eight-year-old who go to Oceanview Elementary, and we bike to school every day. So every weekday morning, we're biking down Canes to get to Solano, to cross San Pablo to get to Oceanview, and almost every afternoon, we're reversing that path. And so I think it would be a huge benefit to have the bicycle boulevard there for a safe path for our kids to get to school. Right now, I think there's too many cars on Canes, or it truly feel like a bicycle boulevard, and the stop signs don't benefit the bikes on Canes. They benefit the cross-traffic going across Canes, making it less safe for the bicycle boulevard. So anything that can be done to help reduce the number of cars on Canes to make it more bicycle-friendly would be hugely appreciated to help benefit getting kids to school and getting people around the city. And I think there's a lot of confusion because it's a new program, but I don't think that's any reason to say it's a failure. I think we should continue improving it and doing what we can to, to make it, because it could be just a really great benefit to have a bicycle boulevard there, because San Pablo Avenue is a horrendous place to bike. So if we could have those parallel streets bike-friendly, it would be a really great thing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I don't know if you want to respond to any of the questions or concerns brought up.
Yeah, sure. So the proposal I'm making analogy to Long Beach was not with regard to how the streets are structured, was more that there is a bill that provides a template that can be used and repurposed for this. As I focused on in the, what I presented, I focused on the closest equivalent blocks in, equivalent in terms of configuration blocks that I could find in Berkeley. I wasn't analyzing what's going on in, in Long Beach. In terms of changing the situation, the situation as it exists right now is, as I observe it, maybe it's changed in the last day or two, but most motorists, the vast majority of motorists are parking contra-flow on these nine blocks right now. So the passage of such a bill as this wouldn't change how the streets are being used at this point. At this point in time, the city should start enforcing state law. That would change the pilot, because we're three or four months into the pilot, and, and people are still parking contra-flow. So in fact, I would see this bill as maintaining the conditions that currently exist as opposed to altering the conditions that currently exist. That said, it's not going to pass. I mean, it may get signed October 23 this year, which would be, I don't know, eight or nine months into the pilot. I think it probably is more likely that it gets signed in October 24, which would be beyond the pilot. But the fact that it takes that long, to me, is an argument for getting going. Because if we don't get going on it now, and we decide to keep the pilot, and people continue to park contra-flow, and that continues to be the norm, we could find ourselves in the same position a year from now, being, being behind, behind, trying to seek this accommodation. So, yeah. So those are my thoughts in response.
I think I was going to come up with the same about the efforts of trying to work with the lawmakers to give us the ability to have an exemption, to have something different than state law. I, I really have a hard time believing that it would pass this year, and given that it would at the soonest be October of 2024, you know, we always have the option of extending the pilot, testing it for another year, making adjustments as we go along. But as you mentioned, Councilmember Jordan, getting, getting this through the legislature is, we don't know if it'll take 18 months, two years, three years. And so the sooner we start this process to have some local control over what we want to try and do on the street, I think the better. I look at it a little bit trying to understand, because some ways, the efforts of allowing contra-flow parking is really kind of maintaining Canes and Adams as one-way streets. We just happen to be able to have bicycles going in both directions. I do wonder a little bit if actually keeping the streets as one-way streets with two-way bicycle traffic actually is a little bit easier for us, given the, how narrow the streets are compared to the Berkeley examples. I think that's discussion for Traffic, Transportation Commission and Engineers, but I think the other thing that I would note is, just in my years of experience, you will never find the perfect analogy in what's built. We wouldn't be at the leading edge on this if we did. And so, you know, you can also look at Milvia and all the other streets, and they're not the same situation that we have on Canes and Adams, where we're trying to deal with the fact that people don't behave on San Pablo, and so they want to treat our local streets as ways to go faster. And I'm not a fan of having any of our streets in our community be a method for people to get through our community faster, whether that's Marin, whether that's San Pablo, whether that's Washington over the hill. When I was on Traffic and Safety, that was one of the things that bothered me the most, or, or Solano Avenue. And so having people drive slower on our streets, to me, is, there are only benefits to that. If you're driving slower, you see the local businesses easier. If you're driving slower, you see the pedestrians and the bicyclists. If you're driving slower, you see the cars better. So I'm, I'm all in favor of continuing to explore this option. I do wonder whether or not the option in the end is that it's a one-way street with two-way bicycle traffic, or if it's two-way street with two-way bicycle traffic and contra-flow parking. But I think in either case, it's something that we will have to get an exemption from the state.
Yeah, there is, that, that's, yeah, what you just said, that's an interesting idea for a, a different bill. Because right now, legally, it can't, my understanding is it can't be two-way for bikes, but one-way for motor vehicles. And one of the conceptions for these streets, there, I believe it is legal to have a contra-flow cycling lane on a one-way street with contra-flow parking, if I recall correctly. But, well, it's a one-way street, so it wouldn't be contra-flow with motorists crossing over the contra-flow lane. But the problem is, these streets were one foot too narrow for that. So that's how we ended up where, where we are.
The exception we could ask was, being allowed to do that with one foot less.
Well, it was pure geometry, so they're 30 feet wide, so you take out two seven-foot parking lanes, you got 16 feet. And in order not to have a door zone bike lane, they have to be six feet wide. So that only leaves you 10 feet for the, the through lane, which puts the motorists right up against. So it just geometrically, it, it didn't really work. But you raise an interesting prospect of asking the legislature to pass a bill that would allow one-way streets when they have a semi-diverted to have two-way cycling traffic, which would be a different approach. So, yeah, intriguing. I don't know which, I don't know which the state legislature would be more likely to pass, but it's good to have options. Options is always better when you're negotiating. So to the extent that I'm corresponding with the assembly member staff, well, I guess, if there's a motion tonight to authorize the city attorney to work with staff, it might include that option, you know, that we want to have that optionality there.
I could see that as being a much better optionality as well, just because I think people are used to, you know, being one-way on that street, and I, I don't. And I, I don't, I, I just, I think if we're going to move this forward, that we still need to take a little bit more, you know, information and again, get some, you know, more outreach out there and kind of find out, you know, specifically what, what the people who live on these blocks really think and, and how they feel about it. Because they moved in knowing the street was one-way and now we changed it on them. And, you know, I, I, I want to make sure that we're aware of how this is affecting our, our residents who are living and, and breathing and driving or cycling on these streets. Also, I'm, I'm a little curious and maybe, maybe staff can help us out here. Like, can we continue to operate with this contra-flow parking and just because it's a pilot program and not have to enforce any sort of ticketing or anything for?
We can't, obviously, we, it doesn't comply with the vehicle code. So there's, you know, ticketing could occur by the police department and in fact, you know, it's a violation of the vehicle code as it currently stands.
Because I'm also concerned with the more people of then, you know, making, making the adjustments to their parking to park legally. I'm concerned that that could create more accidents as well by just having them have to re-maneuver their car and maybe not paying attention to who's backing up or doing what. So.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Well, I would, I would, in terms of the two-way, I mean, this is, I wouldn't, I don't see this decision as a decision about whether the streets are going to be two-way or not because the pilot is a result of a 11-year process. So the active transportation plan that, that called for this project provisionally was adopted in 2012, you know, went through planning, went through engineering, the city sent notices to all the residents of the block. So yes, I understand it's confusing and, you know, very few people pay attention to, to city communications.
Also, that was 2011, so.
Right, but I'm saying it's, there's been a long process leading up to this, so it's not, it's not like, oh, we just, we just, you know, willy-nilly, willy-nilly made this change. I mean, it's been a hugely long process leading to this point. So I, you know, to me, I don't see that this parking issue is, I don't see that we need to go back to the public because we've had, as a city, before I was here, tens of public meetings about whether this was going to happen or not, where residents had the opportunity to weigh in. So I don't want to relitigate that aspect of this. Because we already had public process, we had tons of public process around it.
I, I mean, I do share a little bit of this concern that we're going, we are based on plans that were done in 2012, and updated over the years and discussed over the years. We're going to a situation where we're going to ask people to change their habits in the way that they park. If we are fortunate, we will get the ability to have some local control and perhaps allowing residents to continue to, to return to park towards contra-flow parking. I would say my concern about not, not enforcing state law is even if we don't enforce state law, that could, that would put us as a city in a liability issue I don't think we want to put ourselves into if we're not enforcing a state law. So, and, and something happens, right? So I, I think at one point Peggy, a former councilmember Peggy McQuaid mentioned that we allowed people to park on the sidewalk in Washington and we just asked the police to turn a blind eye to that. I don't think this is a situation where we can do that. I don't think this is a situation where, I think that, that would put us in a, potentially in a dangerous situation. And I think we are also in a situation where I, I understand where you're coming, where you're coming from, where members of public have mentioned, they have either used the street as a two-way street where they're allowed to and gotten many dirty looks. Exactly that, what they were, what, what was phrased in, in several emails, because there needs to be more education. People need to understand that these are now two-way roads with limited egress and that they should also be expecting two-way bicycle traffic. There is always a period of adjustment. I was not here when Marin changed from four lanes to three lanes. I hear that was a rather large adjustment period as well. And so I, I think we have to hold the course at least for a year to really understand how is this working. I think the one-year pilot, while I understand the, the motion on, on, on holding to the research, I think in actuality, what we should be doing is looking at it before the end of the year and asking, are there other things we need to be doing to make sure that we've got safe in streets and we're making sure the education is happening? So if we need to make course corrections three months from now, we should be doing that, whether that's more signage or more literally during the day, you know, some of us, looking at you all, volunteering some of our time to be out there and just talking to people, knocking on doors. I mean, the one thing I learned in camp, in the campaign process was knock on doors. If you really want to explain to people, knock on doors. I could spend some time with the why. I'm sure my doctor would love that I'm spending some time with the why. You know, being able to talk to people and explain to them the changes and why the changes are here. Because at some point, the police will have to start ticketing. And we don't, we want to prepare people for that. So.
Yeah, on those, on those adjustments, I think, given what I've heard from some people and then we've received email as well, one of the adjustments that seems like would be beneficial is to put in two-way traffic signs at the entry end of the four blocks that are adjacent to Solano, like sooner rather than later, even if they're only temporary. I mean, one thought I had was since Solano is now signed for 20 miles per hour, there's still those 15 mile per hour temporary signs. Maybe take those signs off, move those things, put them on those blocks and put a two-way traffic sign on them to get that education out there. Now, not everybody will see them, but at least when they turn, some people, when they turn into the block, they'll see the sign. And if somebody's coming the other way, maybe they'll remember the sign. At least we can try it and see if it helps. So that's an adjustment I would encourage. So with that, maybe I'll.
Can I, sorry, circle back to the letter. I think in terms of working with Buffy Wick's office, I think we should proceed with, with your original contra-flow option, but also raise the option of, if, if that's a possibility. Because I think it's easiest, we move forward as, as one voice and one, one intent and then we have a backup. That might also buy us time to talk to some engineers about how might we actually be able to do a one-way with two-way bike traffic? Kind of, our option B, if they don't allow us to contra-flow parking.
Yeah. I mean, I do, I, I, thinking about it in the moment, yeah, definitely want to have those options. I think I'd still prefer the two-way because these streets are no narrower than Stanage, Dalbit, Evelyn. And the two-way, the two-way traffic is a traffic calming. So right now, with them being one-way, they seem much wider and so motorists can go that much faster because they don't expect any, any friction coming the other way. So, you know, first and second best option. Since you, you had the idea of the backup option, would you take a shot?
Before any motion is made, I, I just want to be clear. We, we narrowly agendized this about parking and contra-flow parking. So while I think you might be able to go back to Assemblymember Wick's office about that second option,
Okay.
if that is potentially acceptable, I would want to bring that back.
Okay.
Just to direct, if, if, if that is the pleasure, just because we.
Thank you, Mala. Well, that makes the motion a little bit easier then.
Yeah.
I just want to speak briefly before we move forward with any type of motion, just say that I think I'm, I lean more towards, you know, more towards favorably with this updated potential motion, meaning that we don't necessarily commit ourselves to what was initially presented on the agenda, but allow ourselves room to look into exploratory legislation and language. But also, I just want to raise a couple of points. One of the public comments had mentioned, you know, the level of safety that this individual and their child feel when they're riding their bikes. And that's something I love to hear, that just people, anyone in general feels safe on our streets. And, you know, their comment as well, you know, reducing cars on the streets. Yes, that would be ideal, but we can't reduce the number of cars of people that live there on the street, which makes me favorable to this idea of exploring language around one-way streets, two-way bicycling lanes, if that is even feasible. Just another, the second thing I want to bring up, and I know you all likely seen the email as well, in which a resident had voiced concerns about how they were approached and spoken to, which is upsetting to read as an elected leader. And if there's any way possible for maybe city staff to figure out if we did in fact have a city staff employee on that intersection that day for whatever reason. I don't think it's acceptable for anyone to be told that, end quote, "they are stupid" for not understanding changes in street adjustments and how the road, how the roadway is engineered. My, my gut reaction is to always believe someone when they have feel that, when they felt that they've been harmed and then to move forward with doing thorough protocol of investigation just to make sure there wasn't any miscommunication or that maybe someone misheard, whatever it may be. I hope it's not the case that that language was actually used on one of our community members. But again, it's no less, it makes it no less upsetting to read that in an email. And it does speak to what was just mentioned by Councilmember Jordan and Councilmember Mickey about the necessity for improved and maybe enhanced signage. And as Councilmember Hanson Romero also alluded to, better outreach. I think this item definitely brought out something of low-hanging fruit that maybe we haven't really addressed too well is, you know, around issues of outreach and lack of signage with these roadways. So I just want to mention that. I know it's, you know, that's a heavy tangent off of what's actually on the agenda, but I think it's absolutely, absolutely relevant and necessary to bring up.
Thank you for bringing that up. I'm, I'm being cautious about what we have on the agenda. I think it's good we've discussed a little bit of the signage and confusion people have, especially as we got emails about it. But I do know that that's not quite what's on the agenda, so I'm going to bring it up in future agenda items as a thing to refer to staff. And that might need its own agenda or might not. Might just be a quick fix. But I'm, I'm glad we've had all this discussion of it. Any further discussion or read, ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion that we direct staff to coordinate with Council, with the Wick's office. All right, and I don't know that, I don't have the agenda for me to know the item number.
Yeah, to draft, draft a bill. I will second that.
Been moved and seconded. Let's see, click, can we please have the roll?
Mayor Tiedemann?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lopez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mickey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That brings us to item number 12, which is Council Subcommittee Reports. We will take one at a time and then I think we'll finish with our Housing Authority representative, if they have any report.
Could I offer that we let Peggy present first?
That's so nice. Peggy, would you like to go first? Do you have anything from the Housing Authority to review besides the great presentation we got? You did, that is true, actually. You're, you're exactly correct. So I will, I will read some highlights of that when we get to it.
All right.
Now, would you like to start, Vice Mayor?
So I don't have anything to report back on my standing committee assignments, but I did attend Move and Groove. I logged a personal best for 5K in the last 25 years. Might have been my first 5K since high school, so maybe it wasn't so hard to set. It was a wonderful event. My wife ran her first 5K, so, and she enjoyed it and she's already looking forward to her next 5K. It's a good thing she said that Sunday afternoon as opposed to Monday and Tuesday afternoon when we were both maybe perhaps not enjoying walking upstairs and downstairs. But I think the Move and Groove event was great. So many families were out there, so many people were having a good time. It was definitely more of a crowd of people out to have a good time than necessarily about how fast was I going, was anyone going to run a 5K or skate a 5K or, or for the younger children, run a half a mile. So I did that on the 23rd, attended the Community Expo. Again, we've already said this before, many thanks to staff for, for pulling this off, particularly for also making some last-second accommodations for some groups that found out about the event very late on. But they found more tables, they made more space, and that was really wonderful. And then, as I mentioned before, I went to the Giltrack with Robin, with Councilmember Lopez, and we had an opportunity to go to a small cutting, ribbon cutting ceremony where they opened up the new compost pile there that they have, where I believe right now it's only on Sundays, but it's from 12 to 4, you're able to drive up and take as much compost as you would like. So as opposed to the event that'll be coming up where you'll be getting bags of compost, they actually have a, a pile of compost that you can take as you need. And, and, and I got a wonderful tour of, of the Giltrack and it was, it was really informative to me to understand exactly how they were doing it. It was, I, I had not understood that they, really the process that they were using there and it's, it's quite, quite amazing. So. Thank you.
If I could just comment, I'm super excited to learn about the compost pickup. That was in the works when I was on stopways, so, but I had no idea it's been implemented or being trialed. Is it only on Sunday because that's the only day that, I presume it's behind the gate?
I wouldn't quote me on the.
Okay.
I know it's 12 to 4 is what the sign said.
Does staff know by any chance or?
I, I think it's a work in progress. It's under, primarily under the administration of the Giltrack Farm Collective.
Okay, okay, great. Well, it's very exciting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I do have an upcoming meeting next week for the mosquito abatement district. So hopefully some updates after that. And as Councilmember Mickey just shared, unintentionally stole my thunder on the Giltrack Farm. But yes, also present there, had my chief of staff with me, my son Omoteo, who also enjoyed a tour of the facility in John's arm, in Councilmember Mickey's arms, fell asleep. I don't think it was any offense to how exciting or not exciting composting is, but he enjoyed himself and there's a lot of cute photos. We made sure to get some good, good shots of myself and John pretending to plant a compost. But yes, just to reiterate, it's open, scheduled to be open every Sunday from 12 to 4 during their, their operating time. I would love to see it more accessible on other days as well. But from what I've heard from the folks at Giltrack Farm, they're anticipating that the hub is going to be a very heavily used space or heavily utilized space to come and get compost. a very heavily used space, or heavily utilized space to come and get compost, so I'm excited to find out, and if that the case, then, you know, it just speaks more to our community in Albany, understanding how having a green thumb is doing, fighting the little victories of fighting climate change.
That's a great marketing opportunity for the Giltrack Farm as well, you know, because they'll develop more connections with people that otherwise might not know about the facility or, yeah, wow.
So we have an attached report in our agenda, which people can read for more detail on the Housing Authority, and the chair can correct me if I get anything wrong or forget anything that she remembers. But they discussed a couple of things, including their annual financial audit results, which were clean, and the executive director's retirement, which he didn't mention, but at the end of this year, so they'll be looking for a new one soon. Their main other discussion was around their programming, mostly around the Family Self-Sufficiency Program, which partners with low-income families on Section 8 to help them go to economic independence, so they have about 187 clients under that, and they spotlighted some who had graduated, who were giving back to the program, who were donating to the scholarship program, as well as others who had done well and benefited from the use of the program. Got everything right? Great. On my own part, we had an East Bay Community Energy meeting on April 19th. We did a couple of things, including we are going to be getting new office space for East Bay Community Energy, so we are in the final stages of that, as well as passed a program that will have truck charging in Livermore, so will help with shipping from the port with electric trucks, like big trucks. We also had an A-BAG executive meeting on the 20th, where they presented their budget. This is not the final budget, it will be sent to the General Assembly in June. The important things to note for us is that there's going to be a 10% increase in membership dues. This is not as huge as it sounds, as a CPI increase would be 6% on its own, and that does help, you know, fund a bunch of benefits, which they also summarized. And interestingly, I wanted to note that Bayren and FEP, the Estuary Protection, are both self-balancing as part of that. And last, we did some committee appointments, including appointing myself to A-BAG's Housing Committee and A-BAG and MTC's Joint Legislative Committee. So I will have more updates from those when we start meeting. I think that's all of mine.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the Alameda County Transportation Commission meeting, and your comment about the Drea's trucks, which are trucks that haul containers from, from ports, it surprised my memory that there was an announcement that the first hydrogen fuel cell Drea's trucks will be being delivered shortly to the port, and I think those might be even certainly first on California, maybe first in nation. I know that Councilmember Kaplan, who worked quite a lot on getting the first-in-nation hydrogen fuel cell buses in our area, so I sort of suspect that having the hydrogen infrastructure has facilitated this. The commission adopted a Paris Transit Program implementation adjustments, which essentially contracted food delivery as an eligible activity to be funded by this program, back to just meal delivery, so a community-based organization, Meals. During the pandemic, it had been expanded to taking seniors' food shopping, food shopping for seniors, and, you know, groceries pantry, and so it's being contracted back to that pre-pandemic purpose. We adopted contract change orders to fund the current Safe Fruit to Schools team, of which is three contractors primarily, to continue for another year. Then it'll go out to RFP next year, this'll be the sixth year. They announced the Golden Sneaker winner, which is the classroom that had the most active transportation utilization over the year, and it was a first grade at Berkeley Arts Magnet, actually, 92% participation, which is pretty, pretty amazing. And a friend of mine pointed out, and Chad really caught and didn't think to ask, even more impressive that it's a magnet school, which presumably pulls from a wider area. And hearing that, I suggested that there perhaps should be an award as well for most improved grade or school, however it would be structured, because there's a lot of schools that are not in such a dense area where it's harder to use active transportation, and they shouldn't just be forever not have an opportunity to win. That was all received by the chair, and seemed to be all received by staff, and I also suggested bringing in another program that started up for the last few years is Student Transit Pass, and so students of most of the public schools in, in the county at this point, not Albany, I think for obvious reasons, can get a free transit pass. And, and so I suggested including the use of that free transit pass as also eligible under this Golden Sneaker award-type approach. So hopefully those are a couple of adjustments that will be coming next year.
Okay, well, I attended the last Stop Waste Board meeting. It was more over financials, again, budgets and going forward. I did want to bring up, though, you know, just a reminder to everybody, start, you know, making sure that they've got their education. This goes out to, you know, our public and our community and our restaurants and everything about the AB 1276, the single-use items only upon request. And just, you know, they have so many great outreach programs, so much great education. Really finding out just how extensive their outreach programs are, and I just want to continue to encourage everyone to go to thestopwaste.org, take a look at the programs that they're doing, think about ways that you might be able to implement them in, excuse me, in, in your life as well as many of the other, you know, what am I trying to say? Many of the other programs or, or communities or groups or anything else that you guys participate in, and just continuing to share that information, because the faster that we can get more and more information out to people about, you know, any of the programs that are available, it, it can help us just further our causes going future. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Go for it.
Sorry, I forgot one other item. I attended the AC Transit Breakfast, that was a couple of Fridays ago. It was really great. That's one of the groups that's, that staff accommodated at the last second for the Community Expo. Really highly recommend that people fill out their community survey. It's really important for them. They are looking at, like most transit agencies, they are looking at a fiscal cliff in 2025. They are preparing for that, but they're also continuing their efforts in becoming a zero-emission fleet. So this is both a state mandate, but it's also been one of their main goals. They are actually ahead of the curve on that. One of the interesting tidbits that they, they dropped was they have been building out their electric fleet, but they have found that their hydrogen fuel cell fleet is actually more reliable. When the weather gets cold or the weather gets hot, the driving distance of the electric buses drops by half. So, you know, imagine having to try and plan that out for the bus route. So they, they are looking at a diverse set of zero emissions, but they, they have, they are finding that the hydrogen fuel cell for them is both zero emission, but it's also more, more reliable. They currently, when the, you know, the rolling brownouts happen in the Bay Area, they too are affected. And so they, they would love to get a legislative exception that, that they are, one of those sites that doesn't happen, but currently they also get the rolling brownout. So they are, they are looking to increase their hydrogen fuel cell usage.
Yeah, we'll offer that there is a bill, which you alluded to, which our county is taking a support position on, see what happens. Just to put it out there for anybody who's listening, the survey that you referenced can be accessed at actransit.org/realign, as in realign the bus routes, should you want to take that.
Are there any public comments who wants to ask a question about this item? Great. That brings us to future agenda items. I'll note, as I said earlier, there's some interest in, and we have received communication about more communication as well as possible new signs for the Canes and Adams Way. I'm not sure if that will need its own agenda item, or if it can, its agenda can just be City Manager's Report, if there's a staff way to address that, but wanted to note it. Any other future agenda items from council?
Well, I would, the item that Councilmember, I'm Vice Mayor Mickey raised, to have that optionality, I think that needs to come back so we can add that to the, the menu, the charge. Besides that, I have a potential item pending staff review and conversation, which is to require that sidewalks are narrower than five feet, of which there are not a lot, but some in Albany, particularly on Key Route, say, from Solano North, you know, which is an access way to Albany High School, they're four feet wide, to require that if those sidewalks get repaired, they get built five feet wide, with, with an exception if there's a, you know, pretty severe side slope. So that's a potential item that might come forward, depending upon staff perspective on that.
Is there any public comment on this item? That brings us to announcements of city meetings and events. Ask everyone to take a look at our calendar. Unless there's any announcements, that brings us to our adjournment. Thank you, other members of the City Council, Vice Mayor, all the staff, all the public who have stuck with us, much appreciated, and we are adjourned. Thank you.